I be with our councilmen and women. Lord, help them as they go about the business of our city. Lord, to do the very best they can, the best for each citizen. Lord, I just pray that everything would be done in a way that would be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
I can read about the minutes about Tom. We'll be getting going here in one second, please. I want to get that. Read that.
Just tell me convening the meeting and the turn off.
I can do that. I'm going to call to order this meeting of council. Tonight is the 18th regular city county. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance as a side of prayer?
(Inaudible) America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. What I'd like to remind everybody, turn off, please turn off your cell phones. Keep the side talk down so everybody can listen. And if you don't, we will be asked, you'll be warned and then you'll be asked to leave. I'd like to have the roll call, please, now.
Beer.
Here.
Alberini.
Here.
Bariak.
Here.
Savet.
Here.
Waddell.
I see we have a special presentation here tonight. Senatorial citation on the behalf of Sean O'Brien to recognize Lyle Waddell. As a Senate Minority Whip of the 133rd General Assembly of Ohio, I am honored to recognize Waddell upon concluding his final term as Mayor of Newton Falls. The unmatched gravitas, excuse me, and dedication to which Mr. Waddell took his position is an inspiration to us all. Mr. Waddell is an institution in our valid community exemplifying his commitment to public service throughout his career. The recognition reflects his well-established convictions of hard work, persistence, and compassion for others. A compassion that is clearly reflected by his near-long decade-long tenure, the strength of the village community and the close-knit relationships he has helped to build through his office. The excellence in public service exhibited by Mr. Waddell helps make Senate District 32 the best place possible to work, live, and raise a family. I am certain Mr. Waddell's commitment to his region and fellow residents has led to untold benefits improving our community and state as a whole. It is with great pride and pleasure that I commend Lyle Waddell for his outstanding public services. Mayor of Newton Falls and urge him to carry forward his strong convictions that he continues to what he know to be a very bright future representing Ward 3 on the City of Newton Falls City Council. I'd like to have this to you. First of all, I'd like to have a vote for it, don't we?
No.
No, just hand it to them and then have a picture. I'll go here, Lyle. And do we want to have a picture for this?
It's up to the chair. It sounds like a good idea to me.
I do believe this, if I understand this, the first time that anybody Newton Falls has got it is. So, interesting.
Congratulations. Now we'll go on to a public comments limited to the items as identified on the agenda. And each person will have three minutes to talk. And I will warn you, if you go past your three minutes, you'll be asked to conclude. Is there any public comments on tonight's agenda?
Carl, 128 West Quarry. I have quite a few things I'm going to bounce around and talk about this evening. As far as the Elizabeth Street Park, why take out something that's for the kids when it serves a great service for the children? I guess I don't understand that part of that whatsoever, why you would even consider doing something like that and then giving it to somebody else or offering it to property owners. It's for the children. So why would you do such a disservice to the community? And as far as the electric rates and everything else, from what I could see, why would you change and charge a monthly rate along with a discount? That's not going to help. And what if Amp Ohio has another project that comes along? Is that then going to escalate the rate and is it going to change? How far or how long is that locked in for? Is that a six-month period, a one-year period, or not? Okay? I guess that's, that would be my question on this discount, but it's not a discount because there's a monthly fee. So that's a concern I have. Okay? The finance report over time still seems excessive, in my opinion, in the finance and utility administrative parts. Both months have overtime in those areas. I don't understand that. I know there's been issues with the utilities, but now I'm working through that. And you have the ordinance for the fire district. It is still tabled, but I'm hoping that there has been work towards working on that. So, and I know you can't answer me, but you're shaking your head. So, thank you very much. And if there could be some answers to some questions. Okay. Thank you, sweetheart.
Samantha Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street. I'm here tonight to talk about something on tonight's agenda. It includes a motion requested by Mr. Savet. It reads as follows for all of those watching in here tonight. Motion to authorize the city manager to remove and dispose of all the recreational amenities at Elizabeth Street Park, included but not limited to the playground equipment and to dispose of them either through recycling or internet auction depending on the usability of the items. Motion to authorize the city manager to offer adjoining, the adjoining residence of the Elizabeth Street Park the property for purchase and if any property remains, offer residual to township for use for the township cemetery. As a resident of Newton Falls, I strongly urge the councilman here tonight to remove this motion. In fact, it was shocking to me to have this even suggested. Our park is used frequently by not only those living around the park, but others in the community. This park includes a ball field, playground, and beautiful river access. What was most shocking about this motion is that it was requested by none other than Councilman Savet. For those that may not know in this audience, Mr. Savet holds the title of Director of Tremble County Metro Parks. One would think someone whose profession is in this line of work would not only want to keep the parks this great city is lucky enough to have, but improve them. Instead, Councilman Savet is suggesting we remove all equipment and give the park land away. Let us not forget that no one from Ward 1 had a say in Councilman Savet representing us. Instead, he was appointed by his fellow councilman. And from the meetings I have watched and attended, has done absolutely nothing until this. His first real action as councilman is to suggest the destruction of our beloved park. This was done without asking even one of the residents in the surrounding neighborhood, the people of the ward he is supposed to represent, what their thoughts were on the matter. A more appropriate action would have been to speak to the people of the ward you are to represent, wouldn't you agree? I still am not sure what prompted this action. I asked how much the park was costing to maintain and no one could give me a clear answer, as I was told that they don't itemize by park, only the parks as a whole. I will tell you that the only maintenance that I ever noticed happening is mowing by one city employee for an hour twice per month in the spring and summer months. That's it. The residents surrounding, including us, pick up trash and any other debris, which we are happy to do, to be able to enjoy our park. So how much does a few hours of mowing cost? This coming from a council who has brought up, bought up property and made other frivolous expenditures in the past few months. Perhaps councils should concern themselves more with not embarrassing the residents of Newton Falls by having negative publicity every other week in the paper or television news. Perhaps councils should seek to improve our parks and take advantage of the green spaces we are lucky enough to have in the first place. Perhaps councils should listen to the will of the people instead of pushing their own agenda. To all of my fellow residents of this community, if this motion goes to vote, we must put up a fight. We see what they have done with our beloved community center. Now the Elizabeth Street Park is up for grabs. When will it end? We must demand to be heard.
Ed McLaughlin, 230 Elizabeth Street. I'm here also to talk about the park. Zach, I talked to you last night. Glad to meet you. Had a nice conversation. He might have made a mistake by not going around asking the people in this area, but you know what? I've made mistakes in my life, too. So it looks like maybe we're going to correct this. You know, I grew up in a project in Newton Falls in the 50s. As a little kid, they had a park over there. We all used it. There was a sandbox on one end, swings and a teeter totter's on the other end. We played ball every day. I mean, it was used a lot. Since then, there's been people move in, move out. I don't know how much that park gets used. Now we have a park on 6th Street. It's a nice park. How much does it get used? I don't know. I drive that area. I get an ice cream cone sometimes. I never seen anyone using it. So do we want to tear it down? I don't think so. It's a place where people can go. Elizabeth Street Field, I've been in Elizabeth, in that house for 50 years. Okay? I moved in 1969. I had three children. We used that field. As they got older, I had Little League teams. We practiced there. They got older, I'd take my lawnmower there, my rider, they ride around, we use it, play basketball. Now that I'm older, you know what I use that field for? I practice my chipping for golf. It helps. I'm not the greatest chipper, but it's helped. So I still utilize the field. So if the field doesn't get utilized maybe as much as it did in the past, don't mean that it won't get utilized more in the future. There's a lot of people in that neighborhood that are old. A lot older than me. I'm 75. There's a lot, lot older than me. Okay? Those houses are going to be going up for sale one of these days. We may be getting families in there. That park was put in there for that neighborhood. That's what it originally was put in there for. And so although it may not get used as much as it used to, it's get used. I know, I know people that go down there and read. Just sit on there's a bench and read. So the park does get used, not as much maybe as it didn't in the past, but it could get used more in the future. And I think it'd be good to just hold on to it. Thank you much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council, and the other individuals that have taken the time and effort to be here in attendance, as well as those watching live and those that will see this recorded broadcast at later time. My name is Brian Crop. My address is 247 Elizabeth Street. I'm a resident, parent, and taxpayer in Newton Falls, First Ward. Tonight my address, and where I reside are the main reasons for my being here and speaking before you. Items number seven and eight on tonight's agenda are what I will be speaking in regards to. Late Friday evening, a post was made on the City of Newton Falls Facebook page that included the agenda items, motions, and ordinances that would be presented, discussed, and possibly voted on tonight. Of those items listed were the motions presented by the appointed First Ward Councilman Zach Savet. In his motions, Mr. Savet has requested that the city manager, Mr. David Lynch, be granted the authority to remove and dispose of all recreational amenities in the Elizabeth Street Park, as well as to authorize Mr. Lynch to offer for purchase the land of the adjoining homes and homeowners along Elizabeth Street, or be given, or be given to the township for use as cemetery. Upon finding out Friday that these items would be on the agenda this evening, I immediately set out to find out who, and most importantly, why this was being done, and to also find out if anyone had been spoken to in my neighborhood, in my ward, about these motions. I very quickly learned that no one from my street or my neighborhood, or particularly from the other properties adjoining the park, had been contacted. Not one. After, after also reaching out and speaking to a township trustee, I learned that no one from the township had been contacted either about possibly being given more cemetery property. So just to clarify, no one that would potentially have been affected by this motion or its outcome had been contacted, consulted, or even talked to. No one. Maybe very clear. Appointed First Ward Councilman Savet took it upon himself to have these motions placed on tonight's agenda, possibly at the request or suggestion of others on council or involved in the city's government. I doubt we'll ever know. That would and should be for him to explain. I do know that is extremely troubling to me to have an unelected individual on council attempt to make sweeping changes, such as what was suggested in these motions, and without ever contacting a single individual that would have been affected beforehand. I would also like to add that Mr. Savet is the Executive Director of the Tremble County Metro Parks, and it's my understanding that that is his full-time job. It makes no sense to me why he would attempt to do this. There doesn't seem to me to be anyone that stands to benefit from taking these actions, not the community, not the township, not my ward, not one. If the people hearing this aren't familiar with Elizabeth Street, the Elizabeth Street neighborhood, or the park itself, let me fill you in. It's a fantastic neighborhood. I believe some of my neighbors are here as well, and I'm sure they'll agree with what I've stated. I've lived there since I purchased my home in 2010. I purchased it because of the park. At the time, my youngest son was four years old, and I knew that he would absolutely love the park behind our house. And he absolutely did, and still does. Fast forward to now, and I can proudly say I have raised two boys in that park, and we continue to use it almost every single day of our lives. I can also say that we are not the only ones who use it. It is used constantly by those of us that live on this side of town. We don't have any other parks or open green spaces to utilize on that side of town. Taking away this park would be an absolute travesty, especially considering there's been no research, planning, or alternatives discussed. There is literally no plan in place. I strongly urge council to vote no on these motions. I'd also like to take the opportunity to ask council, from now on, include in writing on the agenda the name, date, ward, and up-to-date contact information for any individual, that's phone number and official email, for any council member or any member of council that submits a motion to the clerk to be placed on the agenda. Thank you for your time.
I'm Sheila Hoffaker. I live at 223 Elizabeth Street in Ward 1. And as with everybody else before me, I'm here to address items seven and eight on tonight's agenda regarding Elizabeth Street Park. As far as I can ascertain, Elizabeth Street Park has been part of the Westview Development Neighborhood since 1947. That's 72 years. In its 72-year history, the park has enjoyed, has been enjoyed by residents of Elizabeth Street, Park Street, Artesian Street, Albert Street, Ridgeway Place, Ridge Road, and Grand Boulevard. My yard is adjacent to the park. I see people using that park daily. Elizabeth Park is also the closest park and recreational area to the Newton Village Apartments complex. There are nearly 50 children that reside at Newton Village. Those children live in an area where they have no other access to outside play areas near their home. Many of the people in the Westview neighborhood purchased their homes because of the proximity to the park. Removing Elizabeth Park would be a disservice to our entire community. The amount of money it costs the city to mow the park a few times each summer is small compared to the benefit the park provides to our neighborhood. Our community would be better served by focusing our efforts and applying for grants or fundraising to enhance the park and the green space we currently have, instead of looking for ways to remove it.
I come to you today in regards to the Elizabeth Street Park. We had the same issue when I was a councilman for eight years, probably about three or four years ago. We were talking about eliminating Elizabeth Street. I did go door-to-door on a couple of blocks and I want to say that it's, it's bad for to close a park. Those parks, little history, the zoning regulations for developers that bring in developments for housing developments came in, and we had, we had a zoning ordinance that says you have to devote so much space or green space for that development, and that became a park. That's how 6th Street Park got it. That's how Elizabeth Street got parked, and so on. As time goes on, and in this case with Elizabeth Street, you know, they were in their 30s, 40s, 50s. They had kids. They played there. They grew up. I don't know if any of them are selling and having younger people come in and having new kids and being able to use the park. I know the equipment, my last year was terrible, and it should get removed. It's unsafe, and I'm sure Harry would agree with that. Other than that, funding for parks, we kind of messed with that a few years ago with allocations of parks funds. We get 10% of the 1% that's paid in income tax, and it's no longer that way. It's reallocated a little differently. And it does cost money to bring playground equipment and other things that you'd like to see for development. And the good of the community, you know, jobs are good for the community, but when you bring a family in, you've got to have someplace for the kids to play, too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council tonight? I'm going to roll it closed. We're going to go on to approval of the previous minutes. We ran before its minutes. Hold on, sorry. We're going to go to the reports, please. I attended a very beautiful Veterans Day program at the school. It was very heartwarming, and especially to find out the history, which I wasn't very aware of, of Mr. Tickner from World War II, and to see one of my classmates. David Teich's picture up there. It was heartwarming. It was a very good program. The other thing I attended, I attended the Board of Elections on the, to be an observer to get it reversed. We were applying to get the board's decision reversed, and we were successful. And tonight I want to, I want to give a special kudo out to Mr. Lynch. Mr. Lynch represented the city. His knowledge of the charter was fantastic. As a matter of fact, Mr. Renee Fox said it was like arguing a Supreme Court case. But the main, the main thing about it is I feel Mr. Lynch did what was right for the people. And now the only thing I can say is that if anyone in this community desires to run for the 1 and 3, you have your chance to get your petitions in by, before the 18th of And if you, if you let this chance slip away, you have to look in your own heart to see if you want to serve this community. But if you let this chance slip away, well, it forever holds your peace. That's it for my comments. Council members? Mr. Savet? Mr. Waddell, Ward 3.
Yeah, this is, there was, during the last couple of weeks, just a couple of informal conversations on some economic development things that are going on. Still a lot of things in the pipeline. We're still working to bring some of these things to fruition. Just, we keep working at them slowly but surely. This is also the, the time of year where most of the committees, boards, commissions that I sit on have their year-end meetings, get-togethers. And I have talked to the boards and have been given permission to bring our mayor-elect, Mr. Klein, with me to these meetings to start getting his feet wet and meeting the people that we deal with, the networks that we have in place. So keep your schedule open. We'll, we'll take those and, and meet with the people in the valley that have got us to where we are today.
Mr. Beer? I have nothing tonight. Okay, we will go on then to the, I'm sorry, Mr. Alberini, you're down there in the corner.
I have nothing, Mr. Bariak. Thank you.
Thank, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to forget you. I didn't see you. I would like to go on then to the Finance Director. Anything from the Finance Director?
My report for, my comments for tonight is just to inform all members of council and the public that the City of Newton Falls was awarded a grant for Nature Works for an amount of $41,089. And the 2018 audit has been completed and audit report was submitted to all members of council. And that's all my remarks are for tonight.
Are there any questions for the Finance Director?
Yeah, no problem, Mr. Mayor. In regards to Mrs. Hoffick here, is that how you pronounce her name?
Yes.
Okay. That was just a grant in regards to playground equipment, correct?
Correct.
To dovetail what she was asking about. So that's a win. How much was it?
$41,089.
Very good.
Mrs. Monson, what is our share of the grant going to be?
As, it's approximately going to be about $17,000 is our share of the grant. And so the major cost of the grant is going to be about $73,000.
Is it true, where are we going to get that money? There's no money in parking wrecks in the budget from what I, is that?
Yes, there is. That is in the budget.
Is it in the general fund?
No, it's in the park budget.
Oh, okay.
That's the only thing that's going to be in the park budget this year.
All right, okay.
Or next year, sorry. 2020.
All right.
This must be, the grant money, is that only for the city park, or does that reach out to the other parks that we have in town?
What we, it is for our main city park off of Quarry Street. There's going to be playground equipment. It's going to be swings and multiple structure. And the plans are it's going to be right behind the pavilions and near the restroom is where the playground equipment is going to go in.
That was in a plan that was put out a while back. So you are going to move that and, and re-figure, configure the park system?
Correct.
The Law Director, Mr. Fritz?
I have nothing to report, but I'm available for questions, gentlemen.
Okay, no questions. I would go to the city manager, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, there are a few people here today that I'm going to ask to stand to be recognized simply because, for various reasons, one of the guys that took a very close interest in what was happening over that Elizabeth Street Park is a name that's familiar to all of us, but if you'd stand, be recognized, our former Ward 1 Councilman Joe Battisti. Joe, why don't you stand up for a minute? Joe is making Corvettes somewhere in Kentucky and yet can't resist to come and observe the activities here, who also maintains a home here in Newton Falls. Great seeing you, Joe. Also, I wanted to ask that the new ward, that is the councilwoman-elect for Ward 4, Sandy Braymeier is here. Why don't you stand, be recognized as well? And last, but certainly not least, the man who will be holding that gavel sometime beginning in January, one of Newton Falls' favorite sons, new mayor-elect Ken Klein is here. Your Honor, why don't you stand? I appreciate the opportunity to do that, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we're very happy about the grant that was received from Nature Works and what can be done with it. But I wanted to also mention to all the members of council that in the area of economic development, we've got a number of things percolating. But economic development takes oftentimes a very long time. It's kind of like a farmer who knows he's got to plant the seed and then fertilize it and wait for rain. And sometimes crops take an awful long time to come into season. But there are a number of things that we're working on, on right now, that are, are very, very important. As part of my report, when you get to the item regarding the fire contract, Ms. Carl talked about the idea of us working on various items, and some of those are ongoing. So I will ask you to anticipate, Mr. Chairman, that when it comes to the fire contract, I'll be asking that that matter be pulled this evening. I'll reintroduce that once we finish some of this work that she's been talking about.
What can we ask to be pulled, Mr.?
The legislation regarding the fire contract, that was tabled.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks this evening.
I'd like to go on now then to approval of the previous minutes for November 4th, 2000, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Changes to tonight's agenda? I had a couple.
Oh, yes, we have changed, I'm sorry, Mr. Savet, changes to tonight's agenda.
Actually, I have a couple. So bear with me. I'd like to make a motion to remove items seven and eight from tonight's agenda.
Roll call. Do we have a roll call on that, sir? Do we?
It's a motion. He can pull it.
He can pull it.
He can pull it without a motion.
Oh, can pull it without a motion? All right.
Oh, I didn't know if I could.
That's right.
I'd like to pull items seven and eight.
You made it. All right.
Mr. Chairman, would that be same regard to my motion, since I was the one that introduced the ordinance for the fire contract? I would ask that that be pulled at this time as well. And I believe that is item, number four, under unfinished business.
Yes. And in agreement with the joint fire And in agreement with the Joint Fire District, we're going to pull, we're going to pull that tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead.
A motion to direct the City Manager to solicit proposals for a park master plan for the city of Newton Falls. And at a minimum include the following, two public meetings in each board.
Do this at the end.
Oh, okay. So a motion to direct the City Manager to solicit proposals.
Do we have a second on that motion? Which, she writes it down. You have it? Could you read that, please?
Now, motion to direct City Manager to solicit proposals for a park master plan.
Wait a second, roll call?
Alberini?
Yes.
Barriac?
Yes.
Savette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on then to, we didn't, we shouldn't have done that then, should we, Joe? It didn't matter, did it?
We changed the agenda, everybody.
Okay, all right. As long as we didn't do it out of line. Okay. Then I'd like to go to the approval of the previous minutes from November 4th. I have a motion to approve the previous minutes.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Barriac?
Yes.
Savette?
Yes.
Waddell? Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to go on now to public hearings. And I'd like the clerk to read that by title, please. Public hearings on number 1.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of property to Mitchell's Metal Recycling.
Does anybody want to speak on it? I rule that closed then? Rule that closed? Number 2.
An ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into and execute a contract with Paul Anthony of Ravenna Structures.
Kathy, is that ordinance 2019-30?
This is the same property that was under a lease agreement before. And I guess my question is, are we going to keep going on the merry-go-round on this one? And is this, okay? Then that answers my question even though it's not supposed to be answered, but my concern is, I don't want us to keep having to go round and round and round with this property and have to keep coming back to council to have to get this taken care of. Now that we're in the property leasing business and property selling and buying business. So, and that's my concern, that we have to keep coming back and forth with this. Thank you.
Anyone else? I rule that closed. Number 3, would you please?
Ordinance 2019-32, an ordinance vacating 50 feet of West Liberty Street.
Does anyone want to speak on this? Ordinance 2019-32. I rule that closed? Okay, we're going to go on to unfinished business. Would you please read that by title?
Of course, it's tabled, sir.
Oh, it's tabled?
Anyone want to remove it from the table?
Can we leave it on the table if we want to?
You certainly can, no one brings it off the table. It will die after this, you'll have to come back on.
I'm going to put, I'm going to put a motion on then to take it off the table.
Chairman, can I be recognized on?
Go ahead, yes, you can.
Yeah, I, there's some questions that have been raised as it relates to this issue. And I would ask the council not to consider until December 2nd if the court, if the council would consider, the Chair would consider that to be possible.
Mr. Beer?
A motion to table it with, yeah, until that date, can we modify the motion? So.
We can't do that, can we?
At the time we initially tabled, if we would put a specific date down, we may be able to keep it that way, but it stands now, it'd be renewed.
Mr. Law Director, what form of motion would allow us to consider this on December 2nd?
Well, it hasn't been passed to the first reading, just let it go and bring it back up?
Yeah, if council wants this, let's treat it as a first reading, then it'll come up on December 2nd of its own accord.
Correct.
If you want to vote no at that time, you can do so.
Then we're just, we'll go on.
It's never, it's never been, we never had a first reading on it. It was tabled as brought to the floor, correct? Because what is the?
There was a motion made to bring it to the floor and then we tabled it.
So it hasn't had its first reading done yet. So if it's not discussed today, it fails, it's no longer on the agenda, but can be brought up again for its first reading, full discussion and vote at a later date, at any later date.
A new ordinance.
A new ordinance, yes, it'll be a new number and all.
But you could, you could have a vote today, which merely pushes it to December 2nd, you need a vote, is that correct, Mr. Law Director?
That would be correct, you have to bring it off the table and actually get a vote to get the second reading.
All right, we'll go that. I'd like to bring ordinance 1, motion. We have to bring it off the table.
On December 2nd.
Savette?
Yes.
Waddell? Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Barriac?
Yes.
Okay, now that we brought it off the table, would there be a, I'll make a motion that we put this back on December 2nd.
No.
No.
It's on the table now, you'd have to read it and have a discussion and then decide what you're going to be doing with it.
Is there any discussion on it?
Just read it by title, sir.
Please read it by title.
An ordinance selling .08459 acres of parcel 53-003024 to Christopher King.
Now you need a second on the motion, sir.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Barriac. As we had discussed, this is not the width of this parcel is not what I would like to see in the proposal. Can you speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be recognized. Thank you. This discussion, as everybody knows, is about a gentleman who lives in a home adjacent to some municipal property that he's been maintaining. So he's talked about the idea of having the opportunity to not just be the maintainer of the property and be behalf of the city, but he also has the opportunity to become owner of part of that property. The difficulty that's occurred in the meantime is that the size of that property, I can say we are not in agreement with as to what portion of that property should be under consideration. So I'm going to ask council to do tonight is the following, and that is to vote yes on a first reading, which is not passage. It will then come up for a vote on December 2nd, at which time I anticipate presenting a relatively minor amendment. The Law Director sprinkles holy water on the minor nature of that amendment so that there is a size of property which is consistent with what different members of this body think is appropriate. If it passes, then great, if it doesn't pass, that's okay as well. Based on the size of the property that's in the survey that's attached to this document, I don't believe, Mr. Chairman, it makes sense to enough members of council that would pass anyhow. So if I haven't confused things entirely, I'm asking that this matter be voted on and I will present an amendment prior to the meeting of December 2nd, and at that time you can take whatever action you want to.
Can I ask?
You have the floor, sir.
What I'd like to know is, this is, there's been a number of properties that we've discussed lately, is this the one that is just a paper street that we're?
No, no. This is the one that's an area of freedom.
Okay.
And there is a piece of property adjacent to Mr. King's house. It's at Freedom, what's the other?
That's the one that he presented?
What is that, Pennsylvania? Yeah, Pennsylvania and Harvard.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman? Just, you know, we don't talk about executive sessions and we don't vote and we don't take consensus in executive sessions. But from my recollection of executive session, there wasn't anybody who was real interested in what we, what we saw in this piece of paper. So I'm not sure how this point, almost one acre, got into this fix. You know, here it is, we've been working on this now, we're talking about it for a couple of months. I still have no idea why this person wants an acre of city property out of a city park. The house was built in 1965. It's been sitting four inches off the property line since 1965 and hasn't been an issue to anybody else. The Westerly property line of the development is a straight line all the way down the development. And it's sitting next to a park, which you have four and a half acres to use as your backyard. So I'm not sure what the issue is, and no one has ever said what the issue is. So if we were looking for 10 or 20 feet to, you know, give the edge of the property line, that might be something to consider. But to consider almost a full acre out of the city park to give to the guy for a dollar, that's, I don't have an interest in that. Well, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we were talking, because we were talking before about the size of the parcel.
Right.
And again, nobody seems to know why, why, you know, the asking for the property, there's no, not a, I haven't heard the real reason for it. And again, if we were just looking for an additional side lot, you know, because your properties in the city now have to sit, what is it, 10 feet off the back property line?
Yeah.
So you can get equipment through there or do something if we had to. If that's what we're looking for, you know, there's an interest there. But for almost an acre of the city park?
I'd like to suggest that we vote on the City Manager's request for the amendment. And then if it comes up, you can vote no on it, Mr. Waddell, that is your right.
I can vote no if I want now, too.
That's true.
Mr. Chairman, the other, if I may be recognized, is that it would give Mr. King an opportunity to come and perhaps address some of the issues that you've raised, Councilman Waddell. But in either case, the amendment that I would present to you would be, I think, closer to perhaps the vision that you had for the original request. And there's no harm done giving Mr. King an opportunity to come and talk to us about it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Lynch?
This is his current residence right here, correct? This property right here is his residential?
I think that's right, yes.
Okay, and the folks at home can't see this, correct?
No, they can't.
Okay. So this parcel, I know that he had Todd Blazek, which is a noted surveyor in the area, survey this for him. So this is actually the piece he wants in. And I don't know, he came to one of our public meetings to discuss a few weeks back.
Actually, I think he.
The last meeting?
Yeah, he came.
I think he attended executive session.
He came, we couldn't, we could not discuss with him, so. I don't know if you folks at home can see this parcel on my laptop, if you can zoom in. It's kind of tough. There you go, good shot. So as you see in that, in that picture right there, it's almost like a rectangle. The property to the right is Mr. King's, the property he wishes to purchase is that kind of almost a pie-shaped piece of property. What was the measurements on that again?
It's in the survey, I believe.
I don't have the map.
380 by 225.
380 by 225? Yeah, I think I'd like to talk to him too as well.
Put the motion. Yeah, let's go on with the first reading.
We are.
We can do that.
Ask if there's any more discussion and bring a roll.
We had a second on it, didn't we, Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Discussion anymore? Roll call, please.
Waddell?
No.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Barriac?
Yes.
Savette?
No.
Will the clerk please read by title? Ordinance 2019-29, please.
An ordinance selling 4.26 acres of property known as parcel 51-900081 to Mitchell's Metal Recycling Services LLC.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Need a first.
Need first.
First, first.
Are you, is that, you're allowed to present it, but when you have agreed it, you have to say you want to be first.
Okay.
So I'll be.
Go ahead.
Motion.
Second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Yes. I know I see it in the ordinance, but I do not see in the easement that for a possible expansion of the bike trail or similar uses. And I was assured that it was in the easement, but I do not see it in there.
Actually, I think there is an easement which is attached.
Well, yes, correct, but so if.
It's a universal easement.
But we're not specifying, there is no, nothing that is recommended that Newton Falls obtain a permitting easement across the parcel for a possible expansion of the bike trail. It says it in the ordinance, but not in the easement.
Yeah, I think it's a universal easement, Councilman.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that Chair Mitchell is asking for the easement.
Mr. Savette?
Yes.
Would you direct that to the Law Director? Maybe he would like to clarify this right now for you.
I'm double checking, from my understanding, I'm going to bring it up. We attach that easement.
Yeah, I, but isn't the easement the, what the gentleman at the recycling facility is getting? And shouldn't the stuff about the bike trail be in there, since that's the legal document?
No, he's presenting the easement to us.
Okay, oh, to go across. Okay, sorry, okay.
No, no, you, I understand, I understand your confusion because it's very complicated. While we transfer the property, we're going to simultaneously sign the easement for him back to us or virtually for anything we need to do. We didn't put in specifically a bike trail, we allowed it to be open.
Okay.
The council, if I may be recognized, Mr. Chairman, that's what I mean by a universal easement. Not only can you put a bike trail, but anything else the community might want as well.
Gotcha.
Anyway, it satisfies your requirements and/or others that somebody else might come up for an easement use as well.
I just, I thought it was going the other direction.
Nope.
That was my fault, thank you.
Just, I guess another comment on the property is it's basically landlocked.
It's city property, but it's basically landlocked. And, you know, this is a case where there's a business over there that's doing very well, looking to expand. And maybe this landlocked piece of property could be used to, you know, to help grow his business, which would result in maybe another employer too, you know, through the economic development part of this. Or 10, and, you know, he has some other thoughts and ideas and plans that he's laid out for his future. And, you know, this, this makes good sense of use of this property since there's nothing else we could do with it.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
I have to abstain.
Barriac?
Yes.
Savette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-30, would the clerk please read that by title?
An ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into and execute a contract with Paul Anthony of Ravenna Structures.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Discussion? To answer Ms. Carl's question, this isn't a continuous round, going around in a circle type of a deal. There was a previous agreement that was put out there for another party to agree to. We gave the agreement out. It was never signed and brought back to us. Therefore, the, there's nothing to it, it's null and void. It is a piece of property that we have and right now we're not utilizing it. And it could be used for this and, you know, help maybe offset some of the cost of the property, but and again, it's our property and if they have to go around in a circle eventually, because they may only be there a year and you may want to lease it again sometime down the road. But the other lease that was out there was never acted upon and so we're exercising another lease.
This one isn't being passed as an emergency like the other one with the Fat Pappy's or what, Daddy's or whatever. We passed the other one in emergency, remember? What, I don't know what the guy's name was, Fat Daddy. I know, it was, this one I could see as in an emergency. I know, it was, this one I could see as in an emergency.
Yeah.
Well, I think the question is, is that we passed that as an emergency.
Remember that?
Yeah, we passed that as an emergency, and then the guy, to help him out, and then he just walked away. So I think that was a concern, might have been a concern.
Yeah, that's right.
Would you please, would you please come in?
As Councilman Waddell indicated, not only is this first agreement with Fat Pappy's, who was a fellow who basically had a food truck, he never executed a lease with us, we never executed a lease with him. Council authorized a lease, but another came to fruition, because as you know, if we don't have signatures on the document, it's not a lease. This fellow wants to display sheds for sale on the city-owned property, and he has a thirty-day termination notice in this contract. So if and when the day comes, and I expect that day will come within the next year or so, that we have a bona fide utilization of that property for significant economic development, we'll be able to do so without any, any difficulty at all.
Plus, we might have some work that needs to be done on that property, and he's aware of that, and we'll be able to go ahead with that work should it transpire.
Yep.
Does anyone else want to weigh in on this? Mr. Savet?
No.
I thought, okay. My understanding to Mr. Lynch and the law director, we, we're going to be getting the property cleaned up.
Yes.
He'll be able to move his stuff, which won't affect us, and we have a thirty-day get-out clause, right, sir?
That's right.
Anybody else like to address this again? All right, I'm going to call for a vote.
Alberini?
Uh, yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
The city manager has asked that ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-one be-
Pulled.
Pulled. We're going to pull it then. We don't have to have a motion or anything for it.
No.
It's just pulled.
Skip over it now, yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to go on then to number five. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-two, would the clerk please read that by title?
An ordinance vacating fifty feet of West Liberty Street.
Discussion, oh, oh, sorry, motion, I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Discussion.
This is just basically a paper street.
Yep.
It's been there on the books forever, and it's never going to be made into an extension of, of the street, so.
Right, Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this? Not only we vacate in a paper street for the people that are on either side of it, but all of the department heads have had significant discussion with this administration to make sure there were no problems with any municipal easements that were needed in that area, or problems in terms of our utilities needing to get in that area. So we can do, take action on this with a great level of confidence.
Mr. Lynch, who's been taking care of this property, the grass mowing in it?
I believe the property owners have, but-
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Berriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business tonight. Would the clerk please read ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three by title?
An ordinance approving the recodification, editing, and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Newton Falls, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Lynch, would you weigh in on this, please? Or the law director, we either want to-
Yeah, I think it's really, the law director can address the recodification question.
Would you please weigh in on this, Mr. Fritz?
Yes, sir. At the end of the year, we, the, there's a company that we retain that takes care of most of the ones in the states of Pennsylvania and Ohio, to take the various ordinances and rules that we put and codify them so they're available in one, one location, found online. They also take all the state traffic laws and criminal laws and modify those so that they're in agreement with our ordinances and renumber them. This is a standard thing we do every November, so it's printed up and ready to go for January.
Any more discussion? Would you like to say anything, Mr. Lynch?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Ordinance two thou, thousand nineteen dash thirty-three, I mean, excuse me, thirty-four, would the clerk please read?
Thirty-three again for an emergency, for a second reading.
Oh, we, we're going for the, I'm going to put that back on the floor again.
Last year. Second.
Does she have to read that by title again?
We did that, had a first and a second, be ready for discussion and a roll call if there's no discussion.
All right, okay. Roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance passes. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four, would the clerk please read that by title?
An ordinance making appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Newton Falls, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, take off, we don't want it as an emergency. Fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2020. I took out, took out the one that I'm talking about.
That's fine.
Um, okay.
We don't have a second yet.
You don't have a second.
I'm sorry, he made the first.
I'll, second.
Okay, could we please have the finance director and the city manager weigh in on this?
Okay, for the two thousand and twenty ordinance for the appropriations, this is just the first reading, and we have until December thirty-first to pass this legislation. We already had a work session on the budget, so there are new budget books that each of you received. Following our meeting that we had, we made the following changes that council recommended at that meeting. So, and we also remet with our department heads, and, and the city manager and I went through the budget. So overall, the appropriation, total appropriation is eighteen million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, and one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our largest fund, our general operating fund, is our general fund, which is two million, two hundred and twenty thousand, and twenty-four dollars to be appropriated. Each fund is appropriated by personal services and other operations and capital. With this two thousand and twenty appropriation, it is anticipated that the personnel will have a one percent increase. We did discuss at the last budget hearing about ditch cleaning that is in the budget under Fund Five-O-Four, which is our stormwater utility. It was also recommended at the last meeting to put more money into parks for fountains at the park. But if we go to the park budget, the only thing really in the park budget I just want to highlight from our meeting is that we have the total park equipment, which is on page forty-seven of your budgets, at seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Now, the grant that we received from Nature Works is forty-one thousand and eighty-nine dollars. In additional, there's possibility that we did receive our Game Time grant, which is the vendor that is supplying the playground equipment to get us additional approximately fifteen thousand dollars. Other than that, that is the budget for two thousand and twenty, and this is just the first reading.
Should we have received that stormwater report yet from Thomas Fulker, anybody?
We have not. You will receive it the moment we get it. I'd like to be heard on this budget as well, Mr. Chairman, if, whenever you take your comments from the members of council.
I'd like you to weigh in on this, too.
Okay, all right. Members of council, this is the first reading of the budget, and I've had some discussion about some other tweaks as it relates to the budget. We are required to have our budget passed before December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, so that it's ready to go according to the state auditor's requirements and according to state law. However, as I've mentioned to you before, the budget is a living, breathing document. I always hear people say that about the Constitution. But we have to react to the events throughout 2020, new grants that come in. For example, if we get a grant in January, you have to change your budget in order to accept that money and have that money included in your appropriation. So what I'm saying to you right now is that, for example, there was a, one of the discussions that took place at the budget discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, was the idea of making some other amendments related to pay ordinances. I'm anticipating some kind of pay ordinance to go in front of this council sometime in January. You can go through that and see how it affects the budget, but to any extent that affects the budget, then there would be an appropriation amendment at that time. I would say the average middle-sized community in the state of Ohio probably has six or seven budget amendments throughout the course of the year as they react to different things. Sometimes you take money from column A and put it in column B without changing the bottom line necessarily. So I ask that you pass this as a first reading, and I'll have further discussions with you as we get to the December second meeting, as, at which point I'll ask you to, if there are any amendments, pass the amendments and pass the budget, but just realize the fact that there may be other grants coming down the pike sometime in two thousand and twenty. In fact, I expect that there will. And there may be cost differentials related to a number of these projects, there, you already have money in your four. For example, the idea of having these ditches cleaned out, the money's in there, but what the exact amount is going to be will affect the ultimate budget. We won't know the cost of that ditch cleaning out till sometime in two thousand and twenty. So we're taking the appropriate action legally, according to the state auditor, but realize that you retain flexibility because you control the budget throughout the course of the next thirteen months. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Savet?
Ms. Monson, do you have any chance for the old, because I wrote all my notes in there?
The what?
Your binder.
Yeah.
I have one old budget, but I don't have yours.
Okay, all right, I was, I was just trying to, so I knew what the differences were, at least on my notes.
If you would like to come in the morning, we can go through the changes, I have them all marked.
Okay, I mean, and even if, you can just put in an email to everyone.
I can do that.
I think it might be easier, so that way everybody knows what the changes were. That's all, really, one knows what those changes were, so don't have to deep dive on everything.
What I'd like to say on this tonight is that, look, I want to be very honest about it. I don't, I trust my people, Mrs. Monson and Ms. City Manager, to do the work and to be everything above board, so it's not a question. But I've got a problem that there's no money in Park and Recs. Did you just say that, Mrs., no money except for the community center, five thousand dollars or something?
Well, the Park and Recs revenue actually is ninety-three thousand, five hundred and nineteen. To say that there's no- Revenue in parks is not a true statement. There's one and a half percent income tax that's coming in, plus forty-six thousand dollars in rent revenue that is anticipated for next year.
That is anticipated, well, we're not putting anything in there, right?
Yes, we are.
What are we putting in?
We're putting in eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty from income tax collections, and we're putting in approximately thirty-six thousand from the general fund.
How much are we putting in professional services, Ms. Monson? Which is a-
That's not in the Parks budget.
Park and Recs.
No, no, I, I, that's another, but how much, I'm trying to get a point across. How much are we putting in professional services this year?
For all departments or a particular department?
Well-
Every department has personnel costs, every department has office supplies, every department has professional services. So every fund in each department has those lineups. So which, what department do we want to look at?
I, I just feel that we're shorting Park and Recs a little bit. And I know we can move the money, but at this time, I don't, the money's not there, is it? Is it there?
There is money in Parks and Recs, as I stated before, for playground equipment, for a mower, and for personnel costs in mowing grass at the park. We have, again, it's about ninety-seven thousand dollars, as I stated. Ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars is a revenue we anticipate for the park fund next year.
John, I think that, can I?
Go ahead.
And I think to John's point a little bit, too, is, you know, changing that tax allocation, I think is probably a little bit of a driver here, too, right? Is, you would have to change that to get any more money into the park budget, correct?
Or, not, either that way, but there's other options. We can increase the allocation from the general fund as well, but, yeah, and the income tax allocation was changed three years ago.
Okay.
Chairman, can I be heard on this subject?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. We've heard a lot of discussion about parks here tonight, and one of the things I talked about upon my arrival here was addressing some of the parks. In fact, I, Councilman Batiste, who just had his beer tonight, he and I, I think it was a kind of cold, wet, rainy day, and we, we went through some of the parks, by the way, especially Elizabeth Street Park, and the one on Sixth Street, and the one over by the community center. And the parks need addressing and upgrade. There is, our dollars set aside for the parks on this budget. However, I am working on some grants and other sourcing, and if I'm successful in that regard, we'll have more money for parks, and I'll come right back to you with a budget amendment. There are different ways, for example, if I'm able to get some additional dollars in the general fund through some other sourcing, then we have the right to reappropriate that money into the parks budget, and I anticipate that happening. For example, John Rusko and the baseball folks have taken every dollar that we give them in capital improvement money and put in about three or four dollars of labor. And that's been, it's a terrific way of leveraging money. And some of these other issues, I met earlier today with Bob Lee and another gentleman from the, the Parks Committee about some of the very small, little tweaks that can be done to the parks to make them more attractive. So I anticipate that happening in 2020, and, but I do ask for a passage of the first reading of this budget, and we'll, we'll continue to attack those things as I'm able to get more sourcing done. But I'll say right now, for public consumption, that I anticipate that I will be able to, to generate additional sources. And then, of course, I can't spend it till you approve the appropriation, and I think the parks will see some very meaningful improvements in 2020.
Ms. Monson, I have another question.
Yes.
Which fund are we way over that we may have to transfer money to as an emergency to? Which fund are we way over on this year? Which fund did we go about thirty thousand dollars over? Are we about thirty thousand?
Okay, so right now, I am currently working on the appropriation ordinance. I think what you're referring to is during our last budget meeting, we were going over the city council's budget.
I think we need to vote on this-
On that, so.
Right now.
So.
We need to vote on this motion on the floor right now, instead of-
Wait, whoa, 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 I want to get this out to the public.
You can, but you need to, we need to vote on this motion right now, Chairman.
What's the motion, sir?
It was to-
To appropriate the-
Yeah. And you're, you're asking here about a different, a different, a different department here.
Mr. Fritz, what is the motion on the floor, sir, that you understand?
It's for two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four, the 2020 budget appropriations.
Can I always put amendments to it later?
Sure, sure.
Do you want to address the, do you want to?
No, we already have that.
Oh. I'd like to say that I understand there's going to be a second reading on this, it comes up. I'm still not for it until everybody in the public has a good opportunity to see what, where the money's going. And I think, you know, our goal is ultra-transparency, and there's nothing, we're hiding, is there? I don't think there is, is there, Anna?
No.
Well, then, I don't see any rush for it, we can't, I have not even had a chance to look at what's been revised in this. I was handed it tonight at seven o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, can I be recognized for a moment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, this budget's been posted online for everybody to review, and they should review it. it. As I mentioned, this is a first reading. So all I'm asking you to do is get the vote in on the first reading and make sure we get it, get a budget passed, because we're required to by law, by December 31st.
I have a motion to approve the budget.
It's already there.
Do you see the vote?
The vote, please.
Beer?
Yes.
Almarini?
Yes.
Barryak?
No.
Shavett?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
We'll go on to 2019-35.
An ordinance repealing ordinance 2013-26 and 2019-04 in establishing electric rates for customers of the municipal electric system.
Seven.
Discussion, I think.
I spoke a couple of meetings ago about the complexities involved with our utility rates. And Mr. Lynch, Ms. Munson, Mr. George, members of AMP, our company we hired to help us with this study, have worked very hard to get to the point we're at today. And when we talk about a living document, this is still a living document because it's not over. There's a lot of things that we're still working on to down the road. It just takes time, but this is the first piece of the puzzle. There's been some postings on Facebook about the loss of the 25% discount that we used to enjoy here, and for some reason, they want to blame the mayor for that, and I'm not sure why you would do that, because the mayor doesn't have that authority to determine what we get and when we get it. It's a vote of council that does that. But just so everybody understands where, why the utility rates are like they are and what they are today, the original rate, the original utility rate on ordinance 88-12 read that the city of Newton Falls passed ordinance number 3621 on June 21, 1982, established the municipal electric service rates to be mirrored after those conveyed by Ohio Edison for general service customers. Section 3 noted that the city hereby affirms its commitment to a 25% discount off of whatever Ohio Edison's rates are for all of Newton Falls electric users by ordinance 4216 passed on 62287 and its periodic evaluations. As we go forward in 2001 with the ordinance 2001-11, the language that I just read was taken out of the ordinance, mirroring the Ohio Edison rates and giving it a 25% discount. I left the copy of the minutes at home, but the previous mayor at that meeting brought up the fact that they were losing the rate. If they passed that ordinance that night, they would lose that 25% discount, and the ordinance passed. And one of the council members that night mentioned that he felt that it was kind of unfair to mirror the rates, especially when Ohio Edison could raise their rates anytime they felt like it, and if we didn't raise ours to be what theirs, then there was some disparity there. And actually, PFK Associates that we hired at the time suggested that we do away with that 25% discount. So on ordinance 2001-11, they did away with the 25% discount back on May or June of 2001. So it's been gone for 18 years. It's gone, it's over with, it's not coming back. So we'll just forget about that. The rates that you see today are, that we're presenting for council to look at, is a, it's a lot of work. Bill George has some work that has to be done in the Church Street substation over there. We have about $3.5 million worth of work that needs to be done. There's some 69 KV breakers that need to be done. We have five. Two of them have been replaced because they failed, so we still have three to go. And just some GIS information that we'd like to put in so that we have an updated mapping system of our utilities. He has decided to hold off on that. It will not hurt our service. It will not hurt our reliability to the customers. It's just like anything else. You can put a new 69 KV switch in today, and lightning strikes it, or a bird flies into it, or a raccoon climbs up the pole, and that $90,000 switch is no longer any good. So there's also some things we're looking at that maybe we can get somebody else to pay for those repairs, and then we, because what happens when you decide to do all those repairs is that's built into your rate. So by not doing that, we didn't have to build that into the rate. One of the other things that affects our rate is what's called the purchase cost agreement. And the purchase cost agreement is a little bit complicated to explain. It's a multiplication, division. It's, Anna considered tonight and probably tried to explain it, and we still wouldn't know what it all means. If you look at it in paper and follow it, you can do that. What this rate study has done is, if you look on, well, I'm not sure if it's printed on your bill. I looked at ours, and I'm not sure that I saw it.
Yeah, it is.
But we've, we've dropped the PCA down to .0333, which is three cents per hundred dollars, or $3 per hundred goes onto your bill as the purchase cost agreement. They took that and eliminated the PCA and rolled that right into the rate. So you won't have your charge per kilowatt hour and then the PCA on top of that. What that does is it blends it right into your rate, and we don't have to add any extra. What they are looking at, though, is in the years '21 through '24, as I talked about projects and these other things that may or not, may or may not be approved that come from the investor utilities, there may be a small amount of PCA that may have to be looked at down the road, and the amount of $80,000 to $88,000 per year that we may have to try to make up. And that's not necessarily true. It could be not, it couldn't happen.
It could be zero.
It could be zero, it could be as much as $88,000. So you would have to look at how to divide that amongst all the customers and establish a PCA, and then you add that to the bill. So there may be some corrections down the road, a little bit depending on how the cost of the RTOs is to, to our electric service. The other thing that's important to understand about the electric rates is Newton Falls has set up accounts with different generators through AMP. And there, there's just a number of them, and we have a pie chart, excuse me, because I'm kind of one-handed. We have a pie chart, and this pie chart shows where all of your utilities are coming from, where the source is coming from. And we get varied amounts from different generators, from different RTOs, and we pay different prices for each one of them. When AMP or AMP employees or our consultants come and stand at the podium and talk to us, the first thing all of us do is look at the city manager and say, "How do you feel about it? Tell us what you think." And if you don't research this and you don't have any idea, you rely on somebody else to tell you what to do. So he says, "Yeah, everything's okay," so we vote for it, and that's what happens. Back when the AMP hydro came into effect, there was this push of coal going by the wayside. We weren't getting more coal. Natural gas was going to go through the roof, and hydro was the next best thing to do. Nobody knew about Marcellus shale. Nobody knew this was going to, the cost of gas was going to go down to where it is today. And those, I mean, nobody at this table could ever thought of that. At AMP and other people in the profession never even saw that coming. So you're paying a little bit of a higher rate for hydro than you would if you were buying coal or gas-fired generating plants today. But when you go out on the market and you start buying these, from these RTOs, they sit down and they figure out how much electric we need and how much surplus you need to buy for future development, so that you can buy it at a decent rate. And Newton Falls, like any other community, buys extra electric. But Newton Falls has not had a very strong economic development plan in the last 10, since, well, since 2001. They haven't really brought any business in, and we don't use that amount of electric. So we have to sell it back. So we're buying it at about $108,000 or $115,000, $115 a megawatt, and we're selling it back at about $35 a megawatt on the open market. That's a loss. But that's what happens to every utility. Every utility has, hopefully, some of them don't, but most of them have a little bit of excess you have to sell back. You have line loss, equipment loss, and then what they call free services that's involved in this rate. And the line loss is calculated through the lines and transformers, the reclosing, all those, and the free service is basically traffic lights and streetlights and those kinds of things. So we pay for all that, and that's, that's part of our loss. We have a couple of these RTOs that are coming off in the next year or so, and what that's going to do for our rate is cut down on the loss that we have. So we don't have to go out and buy more electric. We just don't have to renew it because we're going to give up those two accounts, and we will be saving that amount of money. We won't have to sell it back open on the open market. So we're able to reduce the rates by doing that. And it's, it's, when you look at the rate table, the rate structure that we have, I know that Ms. Carl was questioning the rate structure, but the, excuse me while I turn the page here. The cost per 600 kilowatt hours under the existing rates is $95, and that includes your PCA adjustments and all the other things. The same $600 under the new rates would be $86. So it's about a 5.8% reduction in your rate right now, and I think that's a, you know, it's a pretty good reduction. Plus, we are still continuing to work with AMP on our hydro contracts and other contracts that we have to try to purchase power at a cheaper rate. And if we can do that, we'll do that. But that's kind of where it stands right now with this rate increase, is it's going to be a reduction of about 5.8% in your rates, and there's just so much that goes into it. It's, you know, everybody looks at it and goes, "Wow," you know, it's, it's just hard to figure your, our rates. Well, it is, because there's so much involved in it. But we're keeping our hands on the trigger there. We're looking to do the right things, and I know, I think you have a couple of questions, and-
Yes.
Anything you want to add, please do so.
Mr. Chairman, can I be recognized?
Let me see if I understand this right. We got into some contracts that aren't panning out with Hydra. We have a drop-off date, I think it's set of 2024 on some of these.
2022 and 2024.
All right. Now, without them working with us, unless we can come up with some super negotiating power, we're, we're bound with these contracts, aren't we, Mr. Lynch?
Well, I-
It's not your fault, you know, I mean, I understand that. Long before you got here.
I understand that. Actually, I have some more global remarks, some of which will address what you're saying. So at the appropriate time after Councilman Shavett, I'd like to be heard, and I'll include an opportunity to address that question, okay?
And then, I want to finish up. And now, what Mr. Waddell has said, we were buying too much electricity, we're going, in other words, maybe not too much, but we're going to try to watch that closely.
Yes.
How much we buy, because we're buying it and then we're losing.
That'll be in my remarks as well.
And the third point was, for the reduction in the rates was-
Between 5 and 6%.
No, no, I'm not, I'm talking about, oh, we're going to put off a major project.
Right.
Which was 4.4, was it 4.4 million it was supposed to be?
No, 3.5.
3.5, all right, 3.5 million, which we think we can get by with.
After the reflections of the reliability of the system.
Yeah. So that's, that's about the nuts and bolts of it right now, is we're trying to do all we can, and we're working on it. Mr. Lynch is working on it. As of right now, with the study, 5.8%, is that right? Is that right, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Barry?
Go ahead. Got the floor.
Yeah, thank you. In the rate study, we had a historical and projected operating revenues and expenses, and years 2020 and years 2021 were showing a deficit in those years.
No, I've talked to Mr. Teeters about that, and those are some general estimates that he has, there are some other unpredictable, unpredictable components. So what I've asked to address that particular question is for Mr. Teeters to appear our December 2nd meeting, and I really want, from an engineering standpoint, to have him address that, but I think we'll clarify that, and he'll leave you with a sense of confidence about that.
And what it appears to me is-
Right.
Is within the capital improvements line, that was the difference-
Yes.
That was being taken out of the-
The original projection.
The fund. Yeah, yeah, the fund balance.
Yes.
Not out of the revenue.
Correct.
So I guess my concern is that, you know, we're spending more out than we're actually receiving, so, you know, like, while I understand the rate decrease, are we doing it to our detriment if we're having to take it out of our fund?
May I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Teeters is going to talk about that. Protecting the fund balance is very important for that fund. He's going to explain why he has a level of confidence with the ultimate fund balances that will be achieved as a result of this. And so I ask everybody to, to some extent, that particular issue, which is relevant, that he'll be discussing on December 2nd. He'll be here.
And he'll explain the substation and-
Yes.
Okay, because that's my only concern, because in the past, we put off giving rate raises that we needed for years and years, and then when we finally had to face it, we had to raise the rates substantially. I don't want to see us get into that situation again, and that's my biggest concern. I'd like to know how far we're pushing this substation down the road, and, you know, when we will actually address that issue. I don't want things to build up.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, can I take a second address here?
Yes.
One of the other things that we need to look at here on the, the electric rate is there's been some discussion that the city forgave the school $77,000, and that went back on the backs of the ratepayers in the city, and that's just an absolute fabrication of anything and everything. That does not happen. One of the things that we, as a municipality, have that investor-owned utility customers don't have, so we have the ability to set our own rates. When an investor-owned utility decides that they want to go for a rate increase, they have to lay everything out, including salaries and whether you're going to get a credit for hot water heaters, whether you're going to get a discount for all electric homes. Everything that they're going to do goes into a rate increase with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, and that rate is a fixed rate, and you can't change it. We have the ability to use our rates as a negotiating tool, because we can go out, with council's approval, we can change a rate to a new business that's coming in or a new industrial or commercial customer. And, and again, you have to understand that we would never make a rate that where you were losing money on a rate. You're always going to make money on that rate. It just depends on how much. But when you figure your rate structure, as they did here, you know, you have administrative costs, you have construction costs, you have, you know, loan repayments at 110% of the loan. You have to have that balance there. So there's requirements that we have to have in the enterprise funds, but in certain cases, in certain situations, we could use as an economic tool our electric rates and our water and sewer rates, and we can change those rates with council approval where other utilities can't. So to say that, you know, we're not competitive in our rates, and we can't be competitive, and people don't want to come because our rates aren't competitive, that's not true, because we can change our rates with a vote of council where investor-owned utilities cannot change their rates.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the-
Quick. So this 5.8% savings is both commercial and residential, correct?
No, I don't think it's exactly the same. It's, it's the average residential rate, and that's where we-
Okay, so it's residential.
That's where we've been wanting to direct it.
Okay. So my question would be, this doesn't affect the, the agreement that we just entered into with Venture Plastics, et cetera?
No.
All right. Thank you.
We, we, part of the study, what I'm going to read, and if I'm wrong, correct me, Mr. Lynch, or whoever. We do have to maintain our, we have debt obligations, very simply.
Right.
Very simply, it's just the way it is. And things haven't been going too well with the, was it, Mr. Waddell, the transmission costs went up? Was that it?
The transmission costs go up continuously at a small rate.
Right. While we're, we're not getting a, we still have to maintain, we can't give the store away right now the way it is. We're working on it. Okay, is that, and is there any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've been waiting to be recognized throughout this entire discussion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Lynch.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we in Newton Falls, as most of the people in this community know, I sent a letter out to the residents of this community, oh, about three weeks ago, related to these utilities. I just celebrated my one-year anniversary as City Manager here, and in January of 19, January of 19, we began looking at the issue of utility sourcing and utility rates here in Newton Falls, especially the sourcing of how we buy our electricity. In Newton Falls, we don't generate electricity, but we're selling- In Newton Falls, we don't generate electricity, but we're selling it to all of the residents. So what that means is we're buying electricity from other generators of electricity. And at this point in time, we're purchasing our electricity from nine different generators of electricity. And all nine of those contracts for the purchase of electricity to sell back to you have been approved by previous city councils. And one of the things that Councilman Waddell was talking about was the fact that we need to look very carefully at those contracts. And the evaluation of those contracts that took place many years ago probably should have been done with a keener eye towards some of the questions about these contracts. Now, I mentioned in that letter that I was going to compose a newsletter. It's the second one. We did one in June, which was on a bunch of general issues, but that I would send to residents of this community a very broad viewed newsletter. And there's an eight-page newsletter now going to every single one of you. It's going to the post office, I believe sometime tomorrow morning. And all of these questions have been discussed here on the floor are going to be discussed in great detail. However, the legislation that's on for tonight has been described in the letter you got before, the newsletter that you're about to receive in your mailboxes. And I say to you tonight, as part of this legislation, this is phase one of our effort to reduce our rates. The average residential rate, as described by Councilman Waddell, is going down between 5 and 6%. And that will be effective in your December consumption and will be reflected in your January bill that you get. It's relief that we want to give to our citizens because while different parts of the economy are perking along, we in our households are still trying to make ends meet. And that will help us do that. Now, I said that's phase one. The reason I say that's phase one, and by the way, I have great confidence, and someone who hasn't gotten credit for the postponement of that capital improvement is Bill George and his staff. They have taken the Church Street Station and given it an additional five to six years of life. Now, you might think, well, my gosh, after five or six years, the rate might go up again. Or if there's a PCA adjustment, as Councilman Waddell referred to, the rate might go up again. That is where phase two comes in. I have been engaged in a battle, to use terms that are perhaps more descriptive, with the folks at AMP, American Municipal Power, who brought us all these nine contracts and said, pass these contracts, sign these contracts, pass these contracts, sign these contracts. And city councils in the past said, okay, we trust you. You're going to lead us down the right path. But there are some things that they predicted would take place, which forced us or guided us into these contracts, which did not take place. Coal continues to be used by some generators in other parts of the country. We don't use coal, and coal is cheaper. I'm not saying anything to comment as it relates to the environment, but the point is that we've gotten into some contracts, the AMP Hydro contract is especially onerous, especially onerous. It is the single most expensive sourcing of our electricity. And as Councilman Waddell indicates, that hurts even more when you know you're buying more electricity than you need in your inventory to keep the citizens' homes going. So we're actually selling some of that excess on the market. The pie chart that Councilman Waddell held up for just a moment is included in the newsletter that you're about to get. So I guess all I'm trying to say is this is a first reading. We will not endanger the capital integrity of our electric system. And one of the reasons we can do that is because we have outstanding people protecting those. And we will make sure that we're setting aside the money we need for eventual capital improvements and for maintenance. But we're in a good opportunity because of the, the work that's been done over by Aaron Teeters from Solvay and Associates, who will be here on December 2nd to talk about some of these more detailed issues. We're in a great position to reduce our electric rate. And by the way, when people were complaining about the high electric charges in July and August, anybody that asked for a meeting with me, we sat down in that ugly rumpus room downstairs and had meetings. Some of the people that I had meetings with are in this room right now. And I told them two things. One is that we want to make sure that our meters are reading accurately. And by the way, that also means you'll see in the newsletter that we are getting digital meters that don't require reader meters anymore next year. But again, I don't want to give an oral, oral explanation of the newsletter you're about to get. But in addition to that, what I said to everybody that left the room is that I started in January to try to fight to get the rates down, and this is the first phase of keeping that promise. And, again, playing a little bit off of the explanation that Councilman Waddell referred to, we are going to prevail over AMP. I went down to Columbus, I've had conversation with them. And I also want to mention that I've had an asset in this that very few city managers have. We have a former electric lineman who understands the transmission, generation, and utilization of electricity and the bill of electricity, perhaps more so than any city manager could ever hope to, and that's Councilman Waddell. And he actually sat with me at a couple of these negotiation sessions that we've had with AMP. And as I mentioned to you, I went down to Columbus, and I'm continuing to fight with them. You will see where those battle lines are drawn when you see this newsletter that you get in your mailboxes. But suffice to say, in Newton Falls, we are not going to make ourselves, as the people that have to pay for our rates, some of the mistakes that have been given to us and the guidance that we've gotten in the past. We have to find electricity that's cheaper to source, and we have to make sure that we're not selling electricity that we've overbought back on the market at a loss. And again, you'll see all of that in the pie chart. So better times are ahead in that regard. And the last element of this discussion is that as these relates, rates are brought under control, that creates even more incentive, as Councilman Waddell was talking about, for us to get the rates down because it's not just for you as the residents, and you're our first concern. It's also for those companies that we want to be competitive with. I am disgusted with the idea that our rates are about 1.4% higher per kilowatt hour than Ohio Edison. That changes tonight, or the second reading of this legislation. And my anticipation and hope is, by the time we finish these battles with AMP and change our source of electricity, we can be lower than Ohio Edison and create an opportunity for ourselves to grow and make our citizens feel comfortable as they, as they try to pay their bills from month to month, some of our people on limited incomes like social security and the like. So I hope that you pass this on a first reading and on December 2nd. Shoot those questions to Aaron Teeters of Solvay and Associates. And perhaps more importantly, and I'm getting ahead of myself, pass the legislation on December 2nd, and then anticipate hearing back from me again as I present to you further efforts to get the rates down here in Newton Falls. And by the way, that's electric. We're working in the same areas relates to other utilities as well, and some of these new digital meters will help in that. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks on that subject.
Mr. Chairman, when, when Aaron comes in on the next meeting, is that just going to be a, a special presentation during the council meeting after we open up? Is there going to be something prior to the council meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I have not had an opportunity to confer with the law director as to procedurally, how we embed his report into the meeting and so that the members of city council can ask questions, especially of the like that Councilman Savet came up with. How, my anticipation is that we'll be able to put our heads together and come up with a procedural way so that members of the public that are attending the meeting will be able to understand what's going on as well. So I'm not sure how that's going to work, but I know it's going to work.
May I ask what you're trying to look for to do? We could do almost anything you want to do. We can do a special presentation. We can go into it when it comes up for discussion, suspend the rules and have them present then. I believe that's probably the best way to go. If you'd like to do a special presentation, we certainly could do that. But my suggestion would be just have it, suspend the rules once he's here and make his comments then.
That's fine. I just wanted to know if we had set up some kind of a, how you were going to handle that yet, because sometimes we've done it before, sometimes a special, you know, session with them, or sometimes during a meeting. So I didn't know if we'd talked about it yet.
We haven't, but that's generally how I try to present it. Again, does that seem to be okay? Councilperson, do you have a problem with that? Because we'd always like to have guidance from council on how we put some of the agenda together when we're not sure what everybody wants.
Yeah, I will. Mr. Chairman, if I might, and Councilman Waddell, Mr. Law Director, after we figure out how we embed Mr. Teeters' presentation into the council meeting, I will have it descriptively placed on the agenda so that you'll see that before that meeting.
What I'd like to say is that tonight, it's been explained why we have the costs we I didn't say it. It's been admitted to. There have been some mistakes made in the past. We got in some things we didn't know were going to go bad, that went bad. I'm a firm believer in let's tell the truth, get it out there. It may be hard to swallow, but it's out there and don't BS the public. I appreciate your hard work, Mr. Lynch, on trying to lower 5.8% right now is, is great. We're going in the right direction. I applaud you on that, and I know you've worked hard on it. That's why I will vote for it tonight. Call a roll.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beria?
Yes. Okay, we'll go down to Resolution 51-2019 with a clerk, please read that.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a contract with David DiChristofaro Associates LLC for development services.
Sure. Members of council, I've tried to bring to the floor of this council sort of a different philosophy in terms of making sure that there's a council awareness of what we're doing in terms of the area of economic development. Mr. DiChristofaro, if you look at the attachment in his letter, explains the fact that back in 2018, there was a contract for $15,000 for him to help us with our development on Route 5. That contract did not go to the city council. Now, I've conferred with the law director as it relates to that contract, and he informs me, and I think he's accurate under the way the, the budget is set up and under the city manager form of government, that if the council provides the funding for such a contract, then if those dollar amounts are actually in the appropriation, then the city manager has the authority to enter into that contract. And that's what happened last year in 2018. In 2019, a continuation of that contract for an additional $15,000 came across my desk. But rather than sign that contract without going to city council, I chose to go to city council. City council proved it. This contract is me coming back to city council again to continue that effort. Now, I've heard, there's been a lot of talk that, well, gee, why are we spending money on economic development when we haven't seen it all come to fruition yet? I guess what I say to the city council in that regard is this. We have at least two significant projects of economic development on the boards right now, and I think both are going to come to fruition. This one has to do with Route 5. I expect them both to come to fruition. The Venture Plastics matter, which was approved by this council, is going to be improved very shortly. And some of you may also remember that I also said I would bring the bed tax back to this organization for approval once some of these other projects come to fruition. And those are right around the corner. Now, one of the difficulties as it relates to economic development is people say, well, if you want us to spend that money, tell us exactly what that fruit is going to be. And under the sunshine laws, you'd otherwise might say, well, if you've had communications with businesses about to come here, tell us those communications. The Ohio revised code specifically creates an exception because of the fact that when you're negotiating with a business to move into town, they don't want to see their worker base leaving. They don't want to see their stock portfolio affected by some of the proprietary information that may be involved in these companies making a decision to locate into Newton Falls. So as a result of that, we go into some of these discussions with a high degree of confidentiality. I'm excited about the projects that are coming, and one in particular, as it relates to Route 5, has the potential to be stunning in nature. All I can ask you to do is take my word for it because I can't tell you the name of the project. So rather than take this DiChristofaro contract, the third one, sign it and say, hey, you put it in the budget, I've got a right to spend it, I'm going to do so. That's not my style. I don't think it's consistent with how you'd like to be made aware of what's going on with the spending. I believe under the revised code with the city manager form of government, if the appropriation is there, I can sign a contract, I think up to $50,000, Mr. Law Director? Okay. Up to $50,000. This is a $15,000 contract, the third one, and it's still below that $50,000 threshold. Why do I bring it to you then? Why don't I just do it so you're not on the hot seat having to approve it? Because you are the elected representatives of the people, and you should have an opportunity to weigh in on these things and make a decision. What I'm telling you is that the key to success in Newton Falls is bringing new jobs and new businesses so that we can have a tax base that supports our, our community services from these businesses, not from these poor folks that are out here trying to meet their bills from day to day. That's why we're looking to, to reduce the rates. And there are two very exceptional opportunities that are on the board. I expect them to come to fruition within the next, to the point with the next six months or so for at least one of them. But the only way we're going to be able to do that and move forward is if we spend the money to have development, engineering taking place along Route 5. And so that's why I'm asking council to move forward with approval of this resolution. I get it and understand the fact that there are some folks in the community who say, you know, that we're from Missouri, it's the show-me state. So if you're going to spend another $15,000, tell us exactly what it is that we're, we're getting from it. What I'm telling you is that we are working on significant commercial development on Route 5. That's why we annexed the property on Route 5 because that golden goose has been walking up and down Route 5 for a long time, and it's about time that goose came into our farmhouse here in Newton Falls. So I hope that you'll pass this, and I'll be happy to entertain all questions, difficult and easy, as it relates to this resolution.
Mr. Lynch, when you first took office, I asked for a motion to be put on the floor that weekly, or at least tell us something about what money you were spending. Now, I don't begrudge economic development, but if I'd have known that there was going to be a $2,000 plane rides, all these lattes and all this stuff, I want to see where the money's being spent. That's my right as a legislator of this community. There's been so much done in the dark that I, that the public isn't aware of, and I made a thing. What fund are we $30,000 over on council spending that you're going to bring a thing, Mrs. Munson? What one are we over on right now that we're going to have to appropriate in emergency?
I believe that is your council professional services.
Right. Now, maybe I missed something. Excuse me. I don't want to, I don't want to, please, I don't want to seem ignorant, and I want to be corrected before I spout off. Did you keep us aware of us going over this amount?
Yeah, each month with the expense report.
It was in the finance report that I must have overlooked.
Yes.
But it was in, all right.
And as we stated before, we're working on a reappropriation ordinance that is coming.
Mr. Chairman, this is merely for this contract, by the way. It's not on these other items that you identified.
For the properties, I know you can't identify a potential developer or buyer, but for the sellers of those properties potentially?
Yes.
Do we have agreements from them allowing us to do some of this work for their properties?
Well, the answer is those agreements actually end up appearing in the final documentation of the deal because the actual deal is between the developer and the owner of the property. Now, I can say this without identifying the properties, that we don't do any of that in a vacuum. In other words, we've communicated with the owners of those properties, and they have said, go, go, go. Green light. Yes.
Anybody else have anything to say? Roll call, please.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beria?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a second address here?
Yes. One of the other things that we need to look at here on the, the electric rate is there's been some discussion that the city forgave the school $77,000, and that went back on the backs of the ratepayers in the city. And that's just an absolute fabrication of anything and everything. That does not happen. One of the things that we, as a municipality, have that investor-owned utility customers don't have, so we have the ability to set our own rates. When an investor-owned utility decides that they want to go for a rate increase, they have to lay everything out, including salaries and whether you're going to get a credit for hot water heaters, whether you're going to get a discount for all electric homes. Everything that they're going to do goes into a rate increase with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, and that rate is a fixed rate and you can't change it. We have the ability to use our rates as a negotiating tool because we can go out and with council's approval, we can change a rate to a new business that's coming in or
We have, uh, Resolution fifty-two dash two thousand and nineteen, would you please read that resolution?
A resolution commemorating Newton Falls' Small Choice Week.
Would you like to talk on that, Mr. Lynch?
We have it on the floor, yes, sir. So, let's accept it, we're accepting it.
Second.
Now we can discuss it, sir.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd be delighted to. School Choice Week resolutions are essentially an opportunity to, um, to commemorate the idea that, uh, families have an opportunity to make some choices as to where their kids go to school. And by the way, um, many of you in this community will know that I, uh, champion public education. It's so essential that we keep our schools very, very strong. Having said that, I also, uh, remember the days when people wanted to homeschool their children, and they got prosecuted. Mr. Fritz can remember some of those days, uh, a long time ago, when, um, mom with a doctorate would try to educate their own children at home, and they'd get prosecuted for that. That doesn't happen anymore, there's so many varieties of choices. Some are good and some are bad, but at least parents are empowered to whether to send their kids to a public school, to a charter school, to a Catholic parochial school, or homeschool, uh, their children. And so, uh, supporting this resolution does not mean you're saying, "Well, I don't think the public schools are appropriate, because we have great public schools, they're doing amazing things, and I think great things are gonna be coming from our Newton Falls public schools as we go into the future." But, School Choice Week merely means you passed a resolution that says, "We celebrate the idea." It is not a substantive resolution, it it really is a ceremonial resolution, embracing the idea that parents now have a choice. And that's one of the reasons we wanna make our schools better in the public school system, so that they'll use that as a choice. So, uh, this is, in fact, I I don't know what the reason is, I thought my name was gonna be honored as the sponsor of this, but it it is nameless, so I will certainly take responsibility for it, and hope that you will, uh, entertain passage of this non-substantive ceremonial, uh, way of signaling the fact that we applaud our parents in taking the time to figure out for their kids what they think is the best choice for education for their children.
Mr. Lynch, you don't think this signals to our public schools that, uh, we're not a total support of them?
Um, no, not at all, and I've heard that argument. If you support the idea that a parent should be able to send their kids to a charter school, you're anti-public schools, or if you support the idea of homeschooling, you're anti-public We live in the kind of democracy where education perhaps is the single most important personal choice that people make for their own children. And, um, I'm the last guy you would wanna say that this would be a signal that, uh, we're not supporting the public schools. The public schools make some of these choices possible. You know, if you homeschool your kid, you get services from the Newton Falls public schools, and the charter schools get some assistance from the public as it relates to that. So, um, what's happened is, the public school system has found a way to integrate the homeschooling and the charter schooling. For example, at some of the parochial schools, you've got these, uh, separate educational buildings for kids that need help in reading, things like that. Where do you think that money comes from? Of course, parochial schools and even homeschoolers play on some of the public school teams, right here in Newton Falls. Um, it's there's a great sense of cooperation, and this school district in particular has been very, very gracious and supportive of these parents that have made these very personal, private choices. Some of them that are religious-based. So, if you believe in education, you believe in public schools, you believe in the First Amendment, and you believe in your kids, it's good that they have this opportunity. So, no, I don't don't think that this shows a lack of support.
Go ahead, Mr. Beer.
I'd just like to say, I support the public schools. I think that every child should have an education, and that's one thing that's made America great, but I also support competition, and I think that people should have a choice. Some people don't agree with some of the things that are being taught with children today. They should have a choice, they should, and competition, to me, has always made for a stronger, healthier situation. When you don't have competition, that's when you run into trouble. So, I would support a resolution like this.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Berriac.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Item seven and item eight have been taken off the...
Number six, sir.
Six.
Motion to accept the finances, number six.
Oh, that's right. Motion to accept the finance, number six. Motion to accept the finance director's October report and attachments, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Second.
Roll call, discussion?
Honored members of council and the public, for this month's report, it was very important. We received a letter from the state auditor's office. For the first time in history, the village of Newton Falls is fully GAAP compliance, and basically have the best financial audit and a very clean audit for first time on record. And our auditor is, um, hired as an IPA, which stands as an independent auditing firm called Charles E. Harris and Associates. The main auditor, his name is Mr. John Phillips, actually called me, and he said that the audit from two thousand and eighteen, all the paperwork for the ten-year historical analysis, all the GAAP paperwork is typically reviewed and sent back to the entity. Well, the state auditor's office accepted it, and nothing was ever amended, and they are very proud of what we have accomplished with our first financial, um, comprehensive annual report, that we're still waiting from hearing from GOFW. Hopefully, we get our certificate of quality assurance. But I do wanna address, um, a citizen that says that the overtime in the finance department and utility office is excessive. The pay period of October the fifth of two thousand and nineteen, I am the director of finance, I do not get any overtime, I am salaried position. There's only one other person in my office, and that person is hourly and is civil service position and does have overtime. For this payroll, this person had two point seven five hours of overtime. Now, in my opinion, two point seven five hours is not excessive when we have a bi-weekly payroll of sixty-six employees. We perform three payrolls a month, we have a bunch of financial reports, we have counts payable where we run two to three check runs in a week, we do investment analysis with our treasury investment board, there's counts receivables, by our higher revised code, we're required to turn in every dollar into our bank immediately. There are internal audits that we perform, again, it is on history that this village is now financially have a GAAP reporting analysis, and that did take some time. We do bank record facilitations on a monthly basis, we're required to do personal history records, reports, there's human resources that go through the finance department, we handle all the workers' comp cases for the village. We also meet with citizens dealing with utility review boards lately, we've had a lot of utility review board appeals lately. We do a lot of research projects, but I could, the list can go on and on. But, um, the the overall monthly report for this month of October is basically that you receive the audit, the audit letter, the bank balances are included, there's an income, um, credit card report, and our income tax collections are up. In the month of October, you will see the income tax summary and distribution reports, there is a dashboard report, and I'm pleased to let you know, again, we did receive a grant application, so we do apply for grants. And that, I am, just wanna say, lastly, in concluding my remarks, with the three personnel in my office, they do a tremendous job, we are dedicated for the village of Newton Falls, and I could not be proud of our of the staff that we have, we should be blessed for what we have and what we accomplish on a monthly basis. For the amount of volume of work that we do, um, two point seven five hours of overtime is not excessive. Thank you, that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Chairman, can I, thank you. Um, this is also, is the, um, you're talking about the income tax collection was hired, do you know what by what percentage from last October to this October?
We're approximately eight percent up.
Oh, I mean, it's just good, I mean, it's...
If that's gigantic.
Yeah. Sorry.
I've seen, uh, are you done, sir?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Wouldn't anybody else say anything on this, wish to say anything? I I personally own a business across the street, sometimes I see Ms. Munson there all day Saturday, and I know she doesn't get any overtime, she's there by herself. I didn't know this was a question, I didn't know that was gonna come up tonight, but I know, uh, Ms. Munson, I know that your work has shown itself, just in the reduction of the violations of the audit, three little on that page that we saw, I, um, I know you'll spend our taxpayers' dollar wisely.
I did wanna mention also, we do, last about year and a half, we have received a numerous increase in public records requests, that goes through my office, our law director's office, and as well as the city clerk, and that has taken time away from doing the very important stuff, but public records are very important too, to get the information out to the public, 'cause we wanna be public, fully transparent and responsible for government, but that has also time away from doing other stuff as well.
If I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, what do you think the cost of labor in those record requests, um, costs the city roughly?
Approximately this year, I think we're up to about a hundred and twenty public records requests, um, and the time of the law director, myself, and Kathy is well over five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Well over five, just in personnel cost alone.
I don't have anything more.
Any more discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Alberini.
Yes.
Berriac.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
We're going to withdraw motion, uh, seven and motion eight, have been withdrawn about the park?
Yes.
Sir, withdrawing that, you have withdrawn it?
Yes.
Okay, can we go to public comments, sir?
We've, number nine, he added, um, Mr. Savet added a request for a motion to...
Oh, that's right.
...to the city manager to solicit proposal for a park.
Number nine, would you please read that request, Mrs. King?
Direct the city manager to solicit a park master plan.
Could I ask, uh, what you, what the gist of that is real quick, Mr. Uh...
Yeah, absolutely.
'Cause you're the expert in parks.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we, I would like to have, at the minimum, two public meetings per board, so, you know, have one at the beginning to get people's input, have one for a draft plan proposal from the consultant, to have a complete inventory of all, uh, a complete inventory and a certified playground inspector inspection of all recreation equipment, you know, that's at all of our parks, and then a maps of all proposed parks to include additions, um, to those parks, and then also a capital improvement plan for the additions or replacement of items, um, you know, to nail down those legacy costs that, you know, we do have a merry-go-round at Elizabeth Street Park that needs replaced, and that's a, depending on where you're, uh, going, five to ten thousand dollar item, so, you know, addressing those things and potentially if we have to fundraise for those, knowing those capital, you know, legacy costs.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, first of all, I wanna kinda give some support to Mr. Savet on putting the two motions on the table and for removing the two motions. Uh, when I saw the motions on there, I didn't know who'd put them on, and I was kind of interested, because I I served on the, uh, Park and Recs Board for four years, and then started in two thousand and ten when I took over as mayor, I went to a lot of the Park and Recs meetings. And Elizabeth Street Park has come up multiple times over there, and when Mr. Zemiznik was talking about, uh, you know, the issues at, uh, at the park, there was a time when we had talked about maybe paving an ingress-egress road down by the fence, and, uh, the residents didn't want that. Um, there was residents complaining about people walking in in other yards, and they didn't really care if the park was there, and I believe that you'll find a number of buildings that residents own that are built on the city park. If you take a look and you go over there, you'll find some buildings that are sitting on city property. Why they got there and how they got there, I don't know, I don't live over there. But, you know, at this point in time, you know, times have changed, and people have changed in the neighborhood, and it's probably a good thing to get a consensus of what's over there, but in the past, there have been some attempts to upgrade the park and do things over there, and they've been met with resistance, to be honest with you. So, this might be a good idea to, uh, have meetings, get together, see how people feel about the parks, and if there is a legitimate use to keep the parks and use the parks, I mean, we have a a park up off of Harding Avenue that nobody even existed till a few years ago, and it's a vacant lot next to somebody's house. Uh, okay, and we have nothing on there, uh, but, you know, if if you're gonna use the park, then by all means, we should upgrade the equipment and and make it usable, and, you know, the buildings that are on the park property, then somebody might look at, I don't know. But, I, it's probably a good idea to, you know, look at this and put some committees together to talk about the parks and and, you know, not only the, you know, the community center park, but all the other parks that we have in town, if they're going to be utilized, then we should, you know, upgrade them and and take care of them.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Berriac.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Public comments?
Pat Leshaw, ten fifteen, Page Four. Couple of different things, Mr. Waddell, you brought up here. I'm gonna address you though, Mr. Lynch. The 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 fact that you're trying to tell council that this is such a secretive operation that they're not privileged, this information is a farce, it's a farce. They took an oath of office, and that gentleman right here, our law director, will testify to you and tell you, that they're bound to confidentiality. If they breach something, and it costs us a deal, they are accountable. I told this, I was told this, you have every right to tell them about any deal that you're working on in an executive setting. And it's in your contract, and it's in our charter. As far as the public records, that would be me, and if we didn't have a terrible system of recording these ancient records that are relative to the, or to the rate structure today, we wouldn't be doing this. I've I've been working, trying to get a meeting with you, and I have had to cancel, because we don't have the records. Kinda hard to talk about things that I have not been, produce all the record requests that I have. You're looking at me kinda strange, I'm talking about the billing errors, okay? There's a lot of things that have happened. You forgave seventy-one thousand, or council got counseled or forget seventy-one thousand in the school. That would've been on the revenue side of this year's budget for the electric department. That factors in, somebody ate that seventy-one thousand. The electric rates that were given to Venture Plastic, okay? I am for Venture Plastic, I was mayor when we ran electric out to Venture Plastic, I I consider them friends. But to sell them electricity at one penny, or is it one percent, I'm sorry, one percent over purchase, not your cost, you're selling electric at a loss. Make us whole, share that kilowatt hour tax, quit taking trips to DC on a jet, reduce our wages, our rates, you could reduce them by nine percent. In two thousand and thirteen, Mayor Waddell, when you were mayor, your council passed rate increases at three percent in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Am I correct? Am I correct? Finance directors should know that. Three percent increases, now you're saying you could rule it back five percent, you can rule it back nine percent, because those were self-adjusting rates. That two thousand and one rate structure he talks about, I was the mayor there, okay? It was self-regulating, we went back one year. He came in in thirteen, and in two thousand and thirteen, under his administration, passed legislation that bumped that base rate up three percent, three percent, three percent. It's a fact. All the billing errors, we forgave. How much in the school now? I mean, that's all great, but we didn't even go after a bond, we just threw it away. We didn't throw it away, we absorbed it. The residential... Share the general fund revenue with the utility in revenue sharing, and make that whole. Make the utility whole.
Would you please finish, Mr. Waddell?
I will, Mr. Waddell. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, and you're going to find jobs.
I'll let you finish.
How you doing? David Hanson, 4365, warm red. You know, I want to address Pat's tenure as mayor in office. If anybody's sitting here or in the audience can tell me any economic development that Pat brought in, or for that matter, Pat's father brought in, enlighten me. My father took that water line all the way out to Venture Plastics, paid for every single nickel of it, sold it back to the city 10 years later for the same price. Sewer line went out there, I donated seven, eight acres to get that sewer line out to the Holiday Inn. Pat's exact words to me were, "Well, you'll never get any use out of it, it's a force of nature. It won't work." I don't know whether it was Pat's tenure or not. Drive-by shootings at city councilmen's homes, gun thugs running our town, running roughshod over the people. Not gonna happen anymore. Not gonna go. It's over. It's done. We're gonna move this city ahead. You can't run a city without taxes. You can't have schools, you can't have playgrounds, you can't have any of that. And you gotta run by the rules. You can't make up the Robert's Rules as you go along. And nine out of 10 people, they're not sitting out here with a Robert's Rules book, making it up as you go along. Show me. Just like you said, Mr. Lynch, show me. Pat, show me what you did. Show me what you did as mayor in this town. Show me your economic development. Nah, nope.
While I am appreciative that those were taken off the agenda tonight, I will say this. I think that the park master plan should've been the initial thing that you suggested. I think it was a very poor decision to put this on, and to be honest with you, you know, you might be getting some pat's in the back for taking this off, but I am not having you on the back, sir, because if I hadn't been paying attention to the agenda when it was posted on Friday evening and read through it, and then made a post to kind of rally the troops and bring them here, who knows where we'd be right now. You were fully aware what you were doing, you intended on moving forward with this, until people came here and told you that, you know, we didn't want it. So, in the future, I would hope that you kind of ask the people of your word what their ideas are, because, you know what, I had a ton of great ideas for that park and improving it, and I would love if you contacted me and asked me my ideas.
Absolutely. Kenny Klein, 19 East Quarry Street. What brings me in front of you tonight is, a few days ago, I was contacted by an individual by the name of Mr. John Thompson. Mr. Thompson lives over in the assisted living, over by the Dollar Store, and most of you probably know who he is, he's the guy that rides the wheelchair through town, hunting down, so we probably all see him. Mr. Thompson contacted me, and he had told me about the concerns that he has in a few places with the sidewalks. So, I told him, "I'll come up and meet with you." So, yesterday, I met with him in front of the school, the sidewalk there, and we got together, he brought his wheelchair, and I walked, and we inspected the sidewalk from in front of the school to McDonald's, and I got to see how he had struggled in certain areas, and I would approximately say about seven areas, from St. Mary's Social Hall to right in front of Bob's Stop and Print Shop, about seven areas there, that he should be there. They don't seem to be in terrible condition, but you go there and you see an individual in a wheelchair, or as he pointed out, it's not just for him, but it could be somebody elder, at least somebody with poor sight, or whatever, it could be a real issue. He struggled, and I could see, like I said, about seven areas, possibility of him getting hurt, and I would say that we would do something about it. Seven areas. In each of the areas, all the leaves, a little bit of what is it, crack tree, or whatever, everything, very expensive materials, a little bit of touch of harm. One, the worst place is in front of the print shop, where somebody had fixed it in the past, and it's up, and he really struggles to get over that. All would need to be sloped a little bit. I mean, something, myself, I'd go out there, probably cost me seven bucks. But I don't think it's gonna be very much money, but I would ask before he gets hurt. I mean, he's had other people with him saw, I would hate to see him end up on his side, or somebody else, and I would hope that we could do it sooner than later, before the temperature is cool and we can't get out there. But I walked with him, and told him that I would go there representing him, because he can't golly like this in his chair and stuff like that, but, you know, spend money on other things, something that's small, I would hope that you'd search hard and see him right there, I suppose. Whoever it is that needs to look at it, I would walk it with him, you know, point out areas, if you see, if you would like, or if you'd rather do that, but thank you for your time.
Hi, Joe Batisti, legal point, right?
I'm glad to see your vision of the city parks is moving forward. As you know, I sat on Parks and Rec, and I was also council representative to city parks, and me and Ms. Alberini had many conversations on trying to make the park the staple of the community. And I believe there was a conversation earlier of moving money into the park. If you remember, last year, we moved, I think it was $50,000 to do the park ball fences, which came out to be nice. So, now I'm glad now we're gonna get some playground equipment. Other than that, I appreciate that, that feels good. And I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, or step on anybody's toes, but at that Elizabeth Street Park, and I've mentioned this to the past city manager, there's a park bench way in the back corner with a family name on it. And I asked him if he could get that moved someplace probably home, public, because at one time, I'm sure they paid good money to have their name on that park bench. Last of all, Mr. Lynch, congratulations, you've been here a year. Thank you.
I'm sure everyone's ready to get out of here.
I'll be quick. Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street. First, Mr. Batisti, I just wanted to touch on what he just mentioned as far as the Elizabeth Street Park. There actually were two benches in that park. One bench is actually still standing, it's over along the river up on the hill, in between two giant oak trees. The other one, I actually had to set over by the garbage camp, because it was so rotted and deteriorated, it fell over on its own over time. So, I don't know what the name was on that, I don't know whose bench that was, but I stacked that and several other items, large ticket items, you know, some of the garbage, stuff that was out there, over by one of the garbage camps, I sat there for a couple of weeks until it was picked up. So, that was one thing. I also wanted to take an opportunity to correct Mr. Lynch. He earlier referred to council as the elected officials for the community. Three-fifths of you are elected, so two-fifths of you are not. And also, I want to state that, of the, for the, I'm so tired of hearing the phrase "economic development," and as Mr. Lynch mentioned, show me. I don't want to hear the phrase "economic development" until somebody actually has something on the table, until something's actually done, until you can shout it from the rooftops. It's so old and worn out of hearing the phrase and the terming "economic development." It's a beaten dead horse, we don't want to hear it anymore. It really needs to be, you guys need to work together to make these things happen, as opposed to just talking about them. And I had this conversation with former mayor Waddell privately a while back about how to go about those things, and I told him about the economic development phrasing and those kind of things. And I told him, the position that he held as mayor, and now Mr. Bariak's holding that position, and Mr. Klein will take that position over in January, it's a chair, it's not a title that you hold, it's the chair that you keep, and you are to hold that chair and reserve it for the people of the community. And when you have information, when you go to meetings, when you go to any kind of things that we're paying for, I mean, it's a $2,000 plane flight, it'd be nice if you'd actually take some notes and have some reference material, and it'd be really great if I could get full attention. Mr. Waddell, if you could pay attention to me, that'd be really fantastic.
I'm really taking notes.
Okay, excellent, thank you, sir.
And I'm writing left-handed, so it's hard. Yes, or? I'm just taking notes. I'm taking notes, I'm paying attention, I'm writing.
Why, he has a floor.
Well, yeah. I answered his question.
I'm supposed to, this isn't a debate. I just want to not take notes. He said take notes, I'm doing it.
I'd like to reclaim my time. As far as notes, that's fantastic that I see that you do have the ability to take notes. Please, I wish you would've done that over the last eight and a half years that you were the mayor, because there aren't any records of anything that I can go look up of things that you took down from meetings. If you were to just go away tomorrow and no one ever talked to you again, no one can utilize the information that you have all around in your head that you got from these meetings. It's not written anywhere, it's not available for anybody to look at or utilize. I don't know if Mr. Bariak can find notes from any of the meetings, the economic development meetings that you have, or that you've been on, or the multiple trips that you guys have taken. I don't know where there's any public records that I can even find of those things, because I've made public records of course myself. I don't think those even exist, because you didn't take notes at those meetings. You just went and had a good time, and come back here and tell us you had great conversations, and that's all we ever hear about it. So, I'd really like to see, if people are going to participate and spend taxpayers' hard-earned dollars on taking trips and going to places for economic development or whatever else, please actually do something with it. Thank you for your time.
I gotta tell you, I love you all, but those seats that we are sitting on are absolutely murder. Okay, I don't know if I should be addressing council, or maybe the police chief, I'm not sure, but what I'm here for...
I'm sorry, Ms. Rude, would you please say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara Rude, 60 Bridge Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
I know some of you know me. Anyway, I'm here for one reason, and that is for a stop sign that mysteriously appeared sort of like in the middle of our street last summer, right around the time the bridges were closed. I'm not sure what that was supposed to do, but what it has done is to make it really unsafe, because there's never been a stop sign there before, and I can't tell you how many times I myself drove through that thing, so, and I'm not the only one. It, in my mind, is a safety hazard, and I would like for somebody, whoever, to get that stupid stop sign out of there, please. It's a safety hazard, as far as I'm concerned. Okay. Somebody take it under advisement, I don't know who, but I'm gonna keep on bugging you all till it gets done. Thank you much.
Do we have anybody else who wants to adjust the public comments before we close it out? Counsel, Mr. Zivet?
Yeah, just something that Mr. Klein stated with the sidewalks. Is there, what are the next couple of streets up for the sidewalk program? Do you know what those are?
I think that they were doing over in the Page Court area, but I'm not sure what other than that, that, like, off of Milton, kind of those ones.
Okay, if we could just maybe look at those again, just...
Yeah, can we recognize that question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Councilman Zivet, the, as you know, state, county, and local law requires that the maintenance of sidewalks is actually the private property owner's responsibility. And that doesn't mean the city can't do some things, but it's actually up to that property owner. So, what I'm gonna do is have our code enforcement officer communicate with you tomorrow sometime and identify those, and then we can communicate on a very short-term basis with the property owner, and then take care of some of those issues. And there are occasions when we do intervene and take care of some things ourselves, because on a quasi-emergency basis, something's gotta be done. But ultimately, the, in fact, here's something that most people don't realize, it's law that you shovel your sidewalk if you got snow on your sidewalk. You're required by law to do that. But, you know, we experience people sort of figuring out their own way of doing things. Some people don't shovel at all. One of the things I want to make sure happens this winter is along the commercial area of Milton and Broad Street, that people are plowing the snow onto the sidewalk, because they're trying to clear their own commercial lots. So, my intention is to be doggedly determined to make sure there is free access. John's a great member of our community, and he's kind of a fixture around here, and we sort of have our own little measuring stick as to whether our sidewalks are in good shape, and the measure is, can John get through?
Thank you.
Sure.
And that's all.
Mr. Waddell?
Sure.
I apologize, because I was kind of writing left-handed on some stuff, and I don't write left-handed, I'm sorry. But to answer Mr. Crop, I told him this once before, these excursions that I go on, these trips, these economic development meetings and stuff we go to, pay attention and read the minutes, is all I can tell you. I don't know how many times I have sat in this meeting and read word for word out of a speech I prepared, asked a clerk to put it in, verbatim, into the minutes. We talk about probably most of the stuff we go to, unless there isn't, you know, a whole lot that's done, other than you're going for the networking, which we really need to do. I think that I have explained myself very well on the trips that we take, and I'm very proud of what we have done. To Mr. LaShaw's point, I don't know how you continue to respond to somebody that just doesn't have any credibility, and I'm not gonna waste my time. The only thing I'll say is, just because you never thought of it, just because you never did it, just because you think it's wrong does not make it wrong, and that's where I'm gonna leave that. To answer Mr. Bariak about the lattes, the plane rides, all the other stuff, first of all, the lattes, and I'm gonna applaud Mr. Alberini over there for taking money out of his pocket and bringing the mayor's associations and the chamber to Newton Falls a total of four times over the last two years. The mayor's association never came to Newton Falls, the chamber, their lattes, never came to Newton Falls. They were excited about it, we took them over to Veterans Park, they loved it, it was a great thing to do, it really showcased our community. We've never done that before. Those are things you have to do, and I applaud you for putting your money and your time and your effort out there. Yeah, the city piggybacked on a couple, and it was very beneficial to the city. The plane ride, as you want to call it, was a chartered flight by the chamber with other elected officials of the valley and business leaders to visit our elected officials in Washington DC, the bus ride to Columbus, for all to meet our elected officials and, you know, bring the word of the valley and what we need in this valley, and we all went down with the same three projects, the Mahoning River, the Yars, and Camp Garfield, and we sold that to our people. They're behind us, 100%. The problem is, Mr. Bariak, and the rest of council, the clerk sends out a letter or an email to everybody and invites everybody to go. Nobody ever took the opportunity to go to anything. I chose to go, but nobody else ever said they wanted to go, and it was an open invitation to all of council to go to anything. It's always that way. She sends an email out to everyone. Those are open invitations to all of council. So, don't sit there and chastise one person for wanting to take the lead and try to bring our community into the light, because you don't want to do it. Don't chastise other people. The, I got a couple other things. I disagree with the fact of the confidentiality. I know that when TJ Maxx was going on, that Mayor Hill and one of his, one member of council signed a confidentiality agreement, and they were allowed to talk to anybody about anything. And it's the same way when we're having these discussions with people that we're talking to right now, they don't want anybody to know what's going on, that's what this is all about. And at an appropriate time, that will be brought to the floor of the council for a vote, because it's gonna have to be. But you have to get everything worked out prior to getting to that point. There are just a lot of things that have to happen. And as it, you know, talking about elected officials and, you know, being here and wrong, we're here as legitimate as anybody else in the world, and I don't care whether they like it or they don't like it. We're here appointed by the charter. We just had a state representative, Mr. Glenn Holmes, who resigned and went to the Ohio parole board. There was no election to fill. There was no election to fill his place, they appointed Gil Blair, and he's done a very good job with us coming to our meetings and working with us. I really gotta give him a lot of credit, he's really done a good job working with our community in the last three or four months. But he was appointed, and he'll run at the next appropriate time. We were appointed by our charter, and that's the way it works. And if you don't like it, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm up. I'd like, I'd like to say about Elizabeth Street Park, okay? I never realized that there were that many people that were interested in that park, because it's set there in bad condition, neglected for quite a long time. I know the Cemetery Association would like to see the land go to the cemetery, because our cemeteries are filling up. I know if you look, if you look at the back of that cemetery, it's bedrock under there. A lot of that's undiggable. Well, you can say you don't believe that, but I don't wanna get into it. But anyway, all I'm trying to say is, I didn't know that there was an interest in it, okay? I don't feel that you should attack Mr. Zavet, because I don't think he realized it either. We brought it to the floor, we discussed it, and we removed it, okay? Now, I'd like to say, Mr. Crop, especially to you, that I don't agree with a lot of things that you say, however, I think that you're a pretty smart guy, and I think one day you'll set up here. I just feel that's gonna happen, okay? And when you get up here, I really believe that you're your own man, and you may find out that some of the people that you're supporting right now, you don't agree with, and then they'll be giving you a lot of grief. But I think you're the kind of guy that will stand up for yourself. And so, I, like I say, I don't agree with you about a lot of things. I think we need economic development out on five, I think, you know, we're moving in the right direction, and I think since this administration's come in, we've gotten a lot of businesses in town and everything else. And I would like to say I agree with Dave Hanson, when Pat was in, there was nothing developed. And so that's all I have to say. Mr. Albarini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Crop, you knew I was gonna respond to that, with all due respect, and I'm gonna shock you when I tell you this, you ready for this? I actually agree with what you're saying, because myself and the mayor, or Councilman Lyle, we have talked about economic development so much, and we're to that point where we wanna see it happen. But when you plant those seeds of economic development, as Mr. Lynch talked about, it takes time. There has been nothing, I've lived in this community since 2004, there has been nothing done in Newton Falls until Lyle, at that point in time, took over as mayor and got the train rolling. Do we wanna see it faster? You're in the photography business, everything's a visual thing now. If you don't see it happen, people think it's not happening. Well, there is some confidentiality stuff that we've been told to not talk about, and out of due respect to those companies or businesses that we share information with, when they tell you, "Please don't say nothing," we don't say anything. And I'll give you a good case in point, several years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, Busy Beaver was coming into town, and Busy Beaver gave, I think at that time, the city manager permission to talk about it, and a few weeks later, the Busy Beaver deal fell through, fell through. Does everybody remember that? And of course, everybody came to council and said, "Would you guys screw up that deal for blah, 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 blah?" It's like, it was a private transaction, we had nothing to do with it. There was another individual in town who stepped into the private agreement that Busy Beaver had with Carter Lewis, as far as the sale of the Palmita Building, that fell apart. We took the blame for it. So we learned quickly that this goes shut. So if you came to me and said, "Terry, I want you to help me, I wanna build this big photography place, but I wanna keep it under wraps," out of all due respect, I would do that, because if something would happen along the way, and something, you know, maybe you hit a bump in the road, and if we let that cat out of the bag to whether it's you or any other business, then I'm not gonna bring shame or embarrassment to you, nor to the city council. So there's things we can talk about, there's things we can't talk about, that's just the rules of business. So I appreciate your comments, and Lyle and David Lynch will tell you the same thing. Now, Mr. Bariak, you know, I just love this guy, because we have shared information with him about economic development. These lattes and legislature events, the events that we've had, and that we've sponsored, those are all public events. There's nothing done behind the scenes, we're not running the Secret Service here. You know, they're all on Facebook, they're all advertised, Kathy's done a great job when she organizes these things on our behalf and puts these things together. And what this has done, it has helped brand Newton Falls where it's never been branded before. We've had dignitaries come into our community, especially with the Camp Revenant event, my goodness gracious, we had people come from all over Ohio, like, taking a look at Newton Falls, and like, wow, what a great place for a family, what a great place to come in and move, or, you know, bring a business in. And so I'm a little befuddled when I hear this, these things taking place. And of course, by the time I'm done, you know, making these comments, I'll be an ax murderer on Facebook, as I've been the last, you know, month, and probably you too as well, and probably you too, and probably you too. But, you know, and I'll give you a good example of how this thing works. Regardless of what we say on council, there's already a certain group of people out there. I'm not gonna change the way they think about me, or about Lyle, or about Zach, or about Phil, I'm not gonna change that. You know, people have their mind made up that we're these evil people, and we're doing something wrong, and we're doing sleight of hand, and all this other stuff, and it's like, my goodness gracious, don't people have better things to do? And another good example of that, and I'll try to shut up here, I made the comment during budget meetings about having floral gardens, again, because we're a visual society. I've had the opportunity to travel all over Ohio and see other communities have fountains and beautiful flower arrangements, and, you know, on and on and on, and, you know, I heard from the crowd that night some Snickers, you know, the usual, whatever. Funny thing happened, when I got home that night, I had several phone calls from some of the more mature women in our community, and said, "You know something? We like that idea, and when can we get together and talk about putting fountains in that community center park, or Elizabeth Street, or 6th Street? When can we get together and talk about forming a garden club?" You know, so it's things like that, that maybe somebody may not like that idea, but boy, there's a whole group of people out there that does that. And one more thing I will address now, shut up, okay? As duly elected members of council, and I would say this out of all due respect, Mr. Bariak just won, I congratulated him, Mr. Beer, Mr. Fear, yeah, Mr. Fear. Mr. Beer's won, Mr. Waddell's won, Zach, you know, we brought him on board to fill a spot. And let me choose my words wisely here. You know, the majority of people voted all of us on council, the majority. And so when some of the folks who don't disagree with us come up here and continually criticize Terry Albarini, or Zach, or Lyle, or Phil, or even Mr. Bariak, what they're doing is you're criticizing those people who voted for these folks, and telling them, "Hey, you guys are a bunch of idiots for voting for Terry Albarini." We know how politics works, there's people who like Trump, there's people who don't like Trump, there's people who like Hillary, there's people who don't. I never told anybody they're an idiot for voting for Hillary or for voting for Trump, that's their right. But these, as duly elected officials of Newton Falls, you may not think so, but they deserve and they have earned that respect by the people who have voted them, and you can shake your head, the people who, just like if you run, you get voted into office, you know?
I'd be elected.
I hope you would be, but I have to respect those people who would vote for you, right? Just like you should do here, it works both ways. So, that being said, I will end it right there.
City Finance Director? City Manager?
Yes, just a couple of remarks.
Are we out of order, is the Law Director going before?
Law Director.
Wonderful, I thank you for the opportunity, sir.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fritz.
No problem, generally I don't have a comment to make. The one time I have a comment in five and a half years.
Well, make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Time's up.
No, I appreciate that. I've been patient listening to everyone.
Please, excuse me.
No problem.
I was gonna give you a chance.
I'd like to address, make a final comment. There's been a continuing problem, it appears on social media, and unfortunately, Main Street media, where people try to get attention, and that problem is, everyone thinks the law is simple. Recently, I got a couple examples I wanna explain and talk about, just take a few moments. Usually I ignore when there's public rants out there. Recent misstatements regarding my actions, alleged failure by the city clerk forced me to present this statement I'm making today. And there's also this continued belief that the two appointed city council seats are somehow against the Constitution and a violation of all laws. First, I'm gonna discuss the city clerk's failure to notify the Board of Elections on those vacancies for the two seats. As proof that she did something wrong, people put out quotes, they displayed and tossed out totally incorrect sections of the law, they totally used improper law that didn't even apply, or they just made stuff up. One person cited annexation law saying we didn't do it right, another person said, "There's a city clerk manual that's not even binding law upon us." Some people have said the United States Constitution is being violated. What they don't understand is, these vacancies occurred long before the pre-primary deadlines of last year. I'll explain later, but a candidate has to file by December of 2018 to legally get on the 2019 ballot. By the way, there's no special election method to replace them in the charter, we follow the charter. In late September, I was asked to provide an opinion on how long the appointed members of council could sit before they had to appear on the ballot. The Ohio law, based upon our Home Rule Charter and all applicable Ohio law, indicates that two council seats had to be on the ballot in 2020. Because at the time, the city clerk, after we made that opinion, notified the Board of Elections that, when we did first fill those seats, we didn't have to notify the Board of Elections. We didn't need the Board of Elections, there was no necessary, the charter told us how to replace those seats. But now, once we have the opinion that it has to be in 2020, we notified the city clerk, city clerk notified the Board of Elections, that now we need them to get this stuff prepared. Her actions at the time were fully timely and fully legal, we did what we were supposed to do, the way we were supposed to do it. That ten-day rule cited in the improper annexation code and the citing of the state clerk manual did not apply, because we were following the charter, not those other rules. The people that criticize us have the wrong law, mainly because they're not lawyers. The Board of Elections notified me more, that they needed more time, they wanna give some time for potential candidates to complete petitions, and they said we have to have a required primary. Our charter requires a primary, cool. So we follow the steps required by the charter as Ohio law is there. There's nothing about, the only problem may have occurred is that people that wish to run for that seat has to have their signatures in within a month, December 18th. Don't hold me to the exact date, I believe it's December 18th. You have to have, if you can't get enough signatures to get in in the next month, maybe you wanna reconsider writing a law. But having said that, that's the only damage that may have occurred by this delay in this process. So there's been repeated postings that I'm ignoring the Ohio law, I'm ignoring the charter, I've had people sit at this podium, stare me in the face, and point at me and tell me to do my job. And I don't care about the armchair lawyers, I don't care what they do, they don't tell me what to do. I take care of the city as best I possibly can. The city appointments that we have for the two council members, you can say they're not elected, that's true, but they are legally and lawfully in those seats. We follow the charter, follow the rules, they're legally in that. If you don't like how they got in there, get your people to vote to change the charter so the next time you fix the problem. We followed the charter to put those two people in that seat. The Board of Elections initially wanted to place that our council seats on the 2021 ballot. The two seats of the city council will now be on the 2020 ballot. Despite Mr. Bariak's claim that Mr. Lynch is like the solicitor of the General United States, I'm sure he did a fine presentation on Friday, but that process didn't happen when he talked on Friday for a few minutes. The minute we found out, they said no, I started additional research, I found the case law to prove our case. I went and started negotiations and communications with the prosecutor's office. Those repeated, even while I was on vacation last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I was setting it all up, making sure, we had to set up so that we could get those people on the ballot in 2020, so we get it as early as possible. So what ends up happening, there's armchair lawyers that come up here all the time. What I did is, I looked at the process and figured out what the applicable law was. I followed the proper procedures to get the matter reviewed and provided the necessary legal arguments. So we got this place, we got, we were successful in getting this on the election, on the ballot next year. I didn't run out and scream and file something in common police court. I didn't get stuck with a long-term lawsuit, we're trying to fight this out with mandamus actions back and forth for hours on end. If I had to, I would've, we didn't have to. I didn't get on social media, I didn't get in the public media, try to make public reports and make a big deal about it. Based upon my legal experience and education, I just handled the matter. It took ten to fifteen days, we were successful. If they would've said no, I'd be filing a mandamus action today or tomorrow, because that's what my job's supposed to be, to make sure the charter goes through. So to bring you to my final point, I try to advise everybody, don't take your advice from social media, get it from a lawyer. Everyone who has Google and a keyboard thinks they know the law, and are not afraid to share their professional legal opinion. I get tired of seeing it, I get tired of reading it, because in the state of Ohio, to be a lawyer, you gotta get an undergraduate degree, you gotta go law school for three years, you gotta pass a bar exam. To be the city law director, you gotta have at least five years' experience in the law before you can be considered for the position. I personally have thirty years' experience before I got here. I now have ten years of municipal law experience, and ten years of dealing with this charter. When someone comes to me and says, "You're not following the charter," I go, "Tell me in English what specifically is wrong, I'll research it and make sure. If it's wrong, I'll fix it." But in most cases, it's just a rant and rave with no basis of fact. So I'm gonna leave you with something that my mother, who I don't believe graduated from high school, said to me on a regular basis, and my mom always says little things to me, and it drives me nuts, even in her passing, she says, "You know, just believe half the stuff you read, and don't believe anything you hear." And with that, I conclude my remark.
Nice job. Thank you. Mr. Lynch?
Just a couple very brief items.
Just say Merry Christmas or something, that's all.
Last week, I had an opportunity to meet with the receivers regarding the health care plan that the city of Newton Falls got itself involved in for the year 2017, and the main thing I have to report is that the litigation in Columbus and Franklin County regarding that is continuing. So I know Councilman Bariak has brought that subject up on numerous occasions, and I continue to talk to the receivers, but they are telling me that it's probably gonna be at least another year before that's resolved, just so you know.
What was that, sir? I didn't catch that.
Receiver tells us it's gonna take another year to resolve the 2017 health care litigation in Columbus.
Oh.
Okay? In addition to that, I had a chance to meet with Burnham and Flower, with whom you have approved a contract in order to go forward with the negotiations for our health care plan for the employees of Newton Falls for the year 2020, and those bids are just coming in. I will keep council apprised of that, and hopefully reach a contract, then go to you for approval of that contract. Now we get to sort of the toy department of municipal government, and that is that on December 1, we're having a lighting ceremony, and that's on Broad Street between Canal and Center Street, all the businesses on that Sunday night will be open from 6:30 to 8:30. So please come there, and at 7:30, right in the middle of all those activities, we will have a lighting ceremony where a very special guest, a surprise guest, that you all will be very delighted to see, and the surprise guest will throw a big electrical switch, and all the wonderful Christmas lights that are going to be installed will light up, it'll be a hallmark moment, and I hope that you're all there. And last but certainly not least, Mayor-elect Klein is here, and Councilwoman-elect Bray Meyer is here, and re-elected-elect Councilman Bariak is here on January 1 at 10:30. So not too much revelry on New Year's Eve, everybody, at the Church of God at 10:30 in the morning, so that gives you a chance to get lots of coffee into your system, at 10:30 until 11:30, we will have a ceremony of the swearing-in of the re-elected councilman, the newly-elected councilwoman, and the newly-elected mayor for the city of Newton Falls. And I'm asking everybody to go. I want those of you that support the people that lost to go, because I want this community to come together. We've heard a lot of phraseology about working together. Well, for the new council and mayoral administration, it starts January 1, New Year's Day. Now, I know that nobody's working on New Year's Day, so you may have a lot of revelry going on on December 31st, but please come there to support the elected officials. One of the things that Lincoln talked about when the South was defeated was charity to all, malice toward none. And in the House of God, we as a public entity will convene in order to convey the message that we support our government officials as they undertake very solemn and difficult duties. A lot more people would be applying for these positions if this were something that were fun and easy, as you tell from tonight, there's always an easy way to generate some consternation in your As you tell from tonight, there's always an easy way to generate some consternation in your constituents. But please come and support all our public officials and each other by coming on January 1 at 10:30. I'll talk about it again in our future meetings because we've got some time till then, but please make your plans. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks this evening. Thank you.
First thing I'd like to say tonight. I appreciate from the bottom of my heart the support, the entire community, not alone. My ward has shown me during this recall and election process. When I went door to door, all I could promise the people was that I would be open and honest with them at all costs. And I think that the people of this community have given me a mandate. Now, I don't believe in putting people on the spot, but ignorance is not the enemy here. It's the people that don't want anybody else to learn. How many times has Mr. Alberini or Mr. Waddell not been on economic development the last eight years? Why hasn't anybody else been given a chance? Why haven't we been given, alternated, so we alternate parking wrecks? We alternate planning and zoning, police committees? Why is that, and when we tried to change it, wham, what happened there? People, you're going to answer that question for yourselves. I expect people that work for us to be open and honest. Yes, granted, I don't look at every line item in the finance department every month and make sure what dollar. That's why I said, I'm not trying to step into administrative over my boundaries. But it would be nice if I know that the city manager said, John, he has a secretary. I'm spending X amount, I plan on spending X amount of dollars. I'm not telling him not to spend it. I'm not telling him what to do. I'd like to at least know where the money's going. And I didn't begrudge Mayor Waddell the chance to go where he wants to go. All I just think is that if I was asked to go, I would not have taken a private jet. I would have gone on a cheapo flight. That's looking out for the people of this community. Now, you can be arrogant, you know, and arrogance is going to get you where it's going to get you, Mayor. I hope it gets you re-elected. I don't know. But when I, Mr. Fritz, when I was down, let me change topic. I'm going to switch gears mighty fast so people catch it. When I was down Friday at the Board of Elections, I did not participate. But one of the main arguments that the four board members put up was why did we not have this mandamus court action in front of us? Did Mr. Fritz not produce it to begin with and let us have this information? It would have been, they wouldn't have had to go anywhere else. I don't know why. I defended Mr. Fritz. I thought to myself, how come Mr. Danzo didn't find it with his law library and his people? So, okay, let's quit throwing stones. Let's work to the common benefit. Do we get the people on the ballot, right of the people to vote? That's the main issue, whoever holds your peace. The argument, the way this was done about the appointment, Mr. Alberini came to the floor and chastised me, took the skin off my hide about not giving Mr. Lynch four, four or five more interviews. But when it came time to give a woman and another fellow one interview, whom, wham, wham, bam, vote, that was it. Out of order. I'm telling the truth.
You have to answer, no. You have to answer.
I'm not telling a personal attack.
You are point of order, you're giving false information. You have to answer the point of order.
I'm just saying.
You can't give false information.
I'm not, I'm not going against you. I'm just saying.
We had a 30-day deadline. Those people who applied, applied at the midnight hour 60 days later. Please make that clear. I would never hold anybody back from trying to apply for a council seat or any other position.
Look, excuse me. When it came time, when it came time, and I'm just telling the people that they can watch the meetings. When it came time to put this mandamus action in, I wouldn't have cared if it had gotten voted down that night. I couldn't even get a second on it to even discuss it on the floor. What kind of government, democratic government is that? What kind of being open and honest with the people is that? And we got $132,000 we still owe, is that right, Mr. Lynch? We still owe the past, for the consortium, for the mistaken health insurance?
That hasn't been determined yet by the receiver.
There may be more though, right?
It could be, it could be less.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we got out of that situation. You know, that you people figure out who got us into that one. All I'm saying is that I don't have time to read every line, nor do I have the education of a master's degree in finance. It's like when I run my business, I hire people that are experts at the fields they do. But I do expect them to be honest with me, tell me what's going on. I am sworn by the same oath that the rest of them are to not tell anything that's in private, and I wouldn't. But all I've heard, all I've heard and what I've seen is nothing. They like us. I'm getting tired of hearing, you know, I know things get to come to fruition, but there's been a lot of things that I wish I'd have been privy to. Maybe I wouldn't have this opinion. And I feel that being an elected official in this community, especially when I control the purse strings, and that's all I want to do. I don't want to get into Mr. Joe's job. I don't want to get into Deanna's job. I don't want to get into Mr. Lynch's job. But my job is to make sure that tax dollars is spent wisely and well. And I want to get something to the people in this community. That's what I want to do. I want to get the parks, I want to get people. There's two forms of, two forms of thought on economic development, and I'm going to give them to you. Number one is you give away the store, tax abatements, utilities and everything, and they may come here. The other form of enticement is that they see this is a great community. Mr. Alberini even said it, you see, it's a great community. We have a great school system, we have a great public fire department, roads and everything. And then they want to come here. They just, you know, people, they look, they send scouts out to look at what they're getting, where they want to live. And we can bring the economic development here. Don't you want the people to live here too? Or do you want them to punch a card and run out to Holland or somewhere else to go home? So all I would say to you people, you know, you people take a look at what's going on. Maybe you won't agree with me, and I don't ask everybody to agree with me. But I'm going to keep on serving the people of this community, and I'm going to keep, and whatever I am allowed to know, and I'm allowed to tell, I will share with you. Because I feel the only way good government is, is transparent. And in my opinion, in my humble opinion, I don't think that a lot of things have been very transparent here. And we, at least now, we have a great, a great opportunity for people to say, what do you think? What do you think about the ways things are going? One other thing, this man, this fellow here, I'm not taking anything away from Mr., from Joe. When he argued that case down there, I could see in his heart that he wanted to do the right thing and he was for the people. And whether you said it or whether you don't, we have, we are on a new direction. We're moving forward. And I've never been one, and I look at everybody, and I've never been one to ever put myself and want to get praise for myself. But I will say one thing. I took a beating to hire this man, and so far, he's been the best thing that Newton Falls ever had. Now, maybe he and I won't agree a lot of times, but finally, we're moving forward. Where my other people, where the people know who voted dead against him and didn't want him in here. Now, is that a lie? Mr. Alberini, is that a lie? Is that a lie, Mr. Waddell? All right. All right. Do we have any executive sessions tonight, Mr.?
That's the night scheduled.
Then I'm going to make, before I ramble on anymore, I'm going to make a motion to dismiss the meeting. Second?
Second. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Zavet?
Yes.
Waddell? Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Ferriac?
Yes.